Good evening, everyone. I'm Scott Lambert, Chairman of the Board. I'd like to call to order May 13th, 2025 East Whiteland Township Supervisor Meeting. If we would please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'd like to introduce our attendees here at the table. To my far right is Supervisor Peter Fixler, Vice Chairman Rich Orlo. To my left is our Solicitor Bernadette Kearney and a man in the tie, Steve Brown, our manager. Start off with Board Briefings. Executive Sessions were held on May 13th at 4:30 to discuss real estate, personnel, and legal issues. There are no current updates to grant awards at this point in time. We're still sitting at about $12.7 million, but nothing new has come in at this point in time recently. Catherine, you want to talk about our plastic bag ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I think we just have park and rec updates first, and then I can.
Okay. Larry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Parks and Recreation Updates. Last weekend, we had our first ever litter cleanup event. We had three volunteers come out with the help of police and fire volunteers as well. Tackled a stretch of road along Mallon Road by the Lincoln Court Shopping Center that has been plagued with trash for a little bit now. And we were able to gather a lot of litter from that area. Thanks to our volunteer coordinator, Kathleen Malloy, for stepping up and really being a voice, an advocate for litter cleanup in East Whiteland Township. Very successful event, and hopefully the first of many. Looking forward to some upcoming events next week in particular. We have our first summer concert series that is featuring Dean &amp; Company and local singer-songwriter Matt Santry. Dean &amp; Company is doing great little dead tunes. Matt Santry is a fantastic local artist. And finally being able to announce our full lineup this summer. June, we have Billy Allen and the Polly's with Support X, Sophie Karan. In July, we are doing a Newport 65 Tribute Festival, Newport Whole Fest. Very famous festival. 65 was the year that Bob Dylan went electric and caused the whole big thur. So we're kind of paying tribute to that festival in July. And then August is Celtic rock and blues night. Hermitage Green coming all the way from Ireland with Eddie Nine V. If you'll notice, the Chill in the Hill got a brand new revamped logo. So we're really leaning into this idea and theme and name of Chill in the Hill. Working with our new graphic arts designer on social media team. We're able to really kind of lean into Valley Creek Park, what makes it special, and tap into the pavilion in the hill and make a brand new logo for this year, which is quite exciting. With that as well, coming up on the first Friday in June, we have our Shakespeare in the Park production. I apologize. We're partnering with Shakespeare in Clark Park Group and Facility. They're doing all as well at Enwell, coming to Valley Creek Park. And the theater, the event, all ages, fantastic production company. And looking forward to having some outdoor theatrical performances in our parks as well as concerts this summer. And then other than that, finally able to announce we're having our summer movie night on the last Friday in August. That is Friday, August 29th. And we will be showing online for all the families to come out on that Labor Day weekend. And start it off right. And those are our big park and rec updates. Thank you.
Any questions from the public? Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
We'll go back now to Catherine on the update on the plastic bag ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yes, the township is exploring through the efforts of the Environmental Advisory Council an ordinance that would ban the use of single-use plastics in the township. This is largely pertaining to the plastic bags that you get at a retailer or food service establishment. It's important to note that what's also contemplated here, though it's called "plastic bags", is straws, takeout containers, and things of the sort, styrofoam, et cetera, is contemplated. So right now, what we have up on the screen is, and this is also on our website, on the front page, and if you look under the Environmental Advisory Council section, is there's this QR code. If you're not able to scan QR codes, there is also a link at the bottom. We're asking all residents and business owners to take the survey to give feedback on what might end up being the final contents of the ordinance. There's a separate QR code for business owners versus residents. So I just wanted to make that distinction, that if you're a resident and a business owner, you can take both, a business owner and the township, excuse me, we welcome you to take both surveys, but they do have different questions targeted at the consumer versus the retailer. And this survey will be open until June 30th, and then we'll discuss the results at an upcoming board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I have a question.
Right now, we don't have an ordinance, so they can do individually what they want to do, each store. So I think it's just their corporate policy, want to use the plastic bags that other ones are using. Yep, right, okay. All right. Catherine, I'll talk briefly about a state House bill called 502. It was brought to our attention that in the budget last week, there was a piece called HB 502 that was interjected. And there's multiple concerns about this bill, but in particular is that this proposed legislation arose the township authority, particularly in regards to zoning and land use. In short, this House Bill 502 would put sitting authority for power generating facilities in the hands of a newly created industry-based seven-member board that has the authority to grant a certificate of reliable energy supply, exempting the project from local zoning, land development, and other ordinances. Essentially, the building of this structure could be two stories, five stories, 10 stories. We would have no restrictions pertaining to sound ordinances, its location. The bill is silent about, for the most part, what land that can be used. Open space could be potentially taken and used to build this power generating facility. Could it be a park that gets taken over? It's silent about it. The only restriction in the bill is that they are not allowed to build on current zoned residential property provided it was zoned that way since 2024. So what we would like to do is alert you to this and to try to reach out to your legislators and voice your opinion pertaining to this. We have sent out, the Board has sent out letters to all of the local representatives who have been involved with this. But it would be probably a good thing if you voiced your opinion on this bill as well. Catherine, did I leave anything out or anything else you want to add?
I think that's a great summary. I would just add that if residents have questions about who to direct those letters to, they can contact our office, they can reach out to me, and I'd be happy to point them in the right direction.
Did we put those letters on our site?
We're in the process of doing that.
Okay, so they'll be on our site soon.
It's okay.
Hey, Andrew Calley, 8 Longview Road. Does this have anything to do, I know they were putting like a power generating facility to help with like AI or something like that in the township, right? And is that before all this bill came in, that all that got approved? Or is this bill going to affect that?
You may be thinking about a facility across from Malvern Hunt.
Yes.
That's called, that's going to be a data center.
Right.
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 So this power generating facility would be something different?
Okay, but they're going to have their own power generating for that, though, right? From what I read somewhere?
I think they're poking into PICO.
Because it's going to have a lot of generating power? So this bill has nothing to do with that project for our township?
No, it would be, it would be another project, another building, another, another brick and mortar building.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Thanks.
Moving on to Board motions and resolutions. Greg, do you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think Township Manager Brown will also have some comments on this topic. This is just an overview, just so everybody's aware. Our current ambulance provides basic life support services to our community, and we use automatic vehicle locator for advanced life support services around our community. So what automatic vehicle locator means is if you have a medical emergency that requires advanced life support, you will get the closest D medic unit to the location of your emergency. Primarily, the biggest part of our township is covered by Malvern Fire Company Advanced Life Support. We have Euclid Advanced Life Support, Paley Fire Company Advanced Life Support. And here shortly, as of June 1st, Good Fellowship Advanced Life Support will be moving into West Whiteland Township to provide services. A lot of communities around us use a funding formula to offset the funding for their ALS services that services their community. So what we're currently in the process of is we have an internal committee in the firehouse that's comprised of fire company board members, staff members, and some volunteers. And we're looking at ALS services as a whole in the township. So we're looking at a couple of different variations of a funding formula, a contracted service for advanced life support, and providing advanced life support on our own. So this was an agenda item tonight to just get this in front of the Board of Supervisors, that some surrounding agencies have begun to ask for funding from our municipality to offset their cost of providing advanced life support in the township.
Could you give a 30-second version of the difference between basic and advanced? So we have an idea?
Yep. So give you a distinction. If you, if you fall down in your house and you have a minor emergency, you're going to get what's called a basic life support ambulance. That would be our ambulance from the fire station right down the street here. If you call into 911 and say you have chest pain, you're having trouble breathing, you're potentially having a stroke or a major emergency, that's when we get, you get our ambulance and the closest advanced life support unit that can provide advanced care through heart monitoring, medication, and other services.
Steve, anything else?
Yeah, I just want to add a couple things here. The provision of emergency medical services, both BLS and ALS, probably appears effortless, even seamless to those of you who've had the need for it. But it's anything but that. The system is in, frankly, it's in a crisis across our state. While we are not in a crisis, if we don't pay attention to it, we could be. We do face challenges and struggles, both career and volunteers. And combinations of the two provide those services. It's very expensive, it's highly technical, and it's, you know, it's difficult work, as you can imagine. So under the state law, you know, the township is required to provide fire and emergency medical services. The law doesn't say exactly what you're to provide, but as Greg described, we provide both basic life support through our own career staff and volunteers in our department. And then we rely on, as Greg said, the automatic vehicle locator to provide ALS, which often calls Malvern Fire. You have a representative from Malvern Fire here. He was seated, he's seated in the front row next to Greg, Eric Novacek. Eric is, I guess, your, the EMS chief, for lack of a better term, or operations person in Malvern. He's simply here to answer any questions that the Board may have or the public may have. I think the biggest point to make is that while we fund our basic life support services in our township in a variety of ways, that's a combination of the township paying its career staff. We have, many people don't know this, we have 14 full-time career firefighter EMTs. And they're the ones who deliver the firefighting and emergency response service in the township. The volunteers support and also provide those services, but the primary services come from our career folks. But the ALS services, again, come from other agencies. We don't provide that. We do not fund any of the ALS service providers around us. I'm not quite sure why. That's just been kind of historically how it is. And we have been approached by Malvern. They've requested that we provide some funding, which personally I think is more than fair. But they're also aware that we have a coordinated effort between career and volunteers that are studying the provision of BLS and ALS services in the township. And they understand it's, it's not an easy thing to just make a decision on, you know, how much to pay and how to deliver these services. So again, the intent tonight is really just to introduce the topic to the Board and to the public and to eventually get us to a point where we can pay for the ALS service and pay our fair share and have a plan in place to continue to provide the high-quality, basic life support and advanced life support services that the community has come to expect and deserve.
Has the closure of Chester Crozier affected us yet? Either directly us or our, when we go to Paley Hospital, more crowded?
Yes, we have seen some crowding. I don't think it's fully there yet. We're further enough away for responses that we should not be affected by having to go that far away. But I do anticipate at some point that the hospitals around here are going to be overcrowded, which is going to cause extended wait times for our EMS providers.
Sure, okay. Does the pub, does the public have any questions pertaining to this topic?
Actually, I do, because on that, what you just said about Crozier closing and the validity of what he's talking about, that is major. Because my wife actually had a situation that went to Bryn Mawr, and she went on a rough prayer, so she actually died. So I understand what you're talking about right there. We do not have a lot of hospitals, because they are closing all around. So Crozier's closing, this is closing, Paley's already overstaffed. I mean, they're not overstaffed, they're getting trucks with people. And I already saw that with my wife in February. So I understand what you're saying right there.
Yeah, and to couple the closure, the Crozier Health System, a couple of years ago, we had the Bradley Wine Hospital closure to the west. And we had the Jennersville Hospital closure that pushed patients to Chester County Hospital, Paley Hospital. And over the last several years, our EMS units and surrounding EMS units, it's nothing to wait an hour and a half, two hours, to get your patient off your stretcher and into a hospital bed. So I feel that this scenario that happened in Crozier is, it's coming this way. It's going to affect us at some point.
And so as the ambulance is sitting there waiting to get the patient off the stretcher, that is out of service for a couple hours, which normally wouldn't be. So the whole situation exacerbated?
Yep, as our ambulance or whoever's ambulance is there that's committed at the hospital, they're not in the system to handle another call. So it's another mutual aid company, and it just keeps pulling units from further and further away.
Is there any consideration of adding more vehicles, staffing in Malvern?
If you're looking for me, we're always looking to add more staffing on. At the end of the day, unfortunately, it's all finance-driven. We have to be able to afford to pay those people, pay for the trucks that they're in, the fuel, the equipment, and all that kind of stuff. That's the challenge is we staff, I know that East Whiteland staffs typically four full-timers or full career staff 24 hours a day. We staff two 24 hours a day, plus a third person Monday through Friday, eight to six. We would certainly love to expand those hours to have more availability, to have more ALS units. Because we're tied up at the hospital, just like Greg spoke, so we're usually tied up together, frankly. So we would love to be able to provide more services and have more staff on to be able to keep those units close to the people that need them. But ultimately, everything's based on funding.
Okay. I know we plan on having more discussions following this meeting, and so we'll keep everyone up to date on status.
Thank you.
Moving on, Chris Jaeger, if you can talk to us about the mutual aid plan?
So the mutual aid plan is a rapid response team. So the mutual aid part of it is if we happen to need a lot of other police officers for an emergency or a planned event, you know, a presidential visit or anything like that, it gives us a pool of officers to go to. And I could tell you when you're out there and if there's something major going on, you don't have enough cops, it's a bad feeling. So as part of the Chester County Chiefs Police Association, we decided to do a mutual aid and organize this rapid response team. So we would have help when we need it. So this is just a formal contract saying what the rules and the laws are around it and what the liabilities are and are. But they all mimic the Pennsylvania state laws for assisting other police departments as if they had called us at that time.
And one of my concerns, which you addressed in our conversations, just to let everyone be aware that during a shift, if there is a requirement or a need to send somebody to the mutual aid event, we've got the backup to make sure that our staff is fully covered here as well. So we're not going to lose coverage here in our township.
Yeah, absolutely not. We, there's a formula for that, what they request that you send, but you never have to send anybody if you don't want to. So if you're busy, you know, you have a car accident and maybe another arrest or something, you just say, "We don't have anybody," and that's it. So they're training enough people to hopefully be able to utilize people from the shifts that are currently there. But there's also the availability to call officers in from home from other police departments to assist us. So that's part of the thing, is, you know, we all have to help when help is needed, you know, the old-fashioned way, like you have to join all your resources together. So that's basically what this is. And it was a lot of work to get it together to where everybody felt comfortable, because you're utilizing officers who you didn't hire. So, you know, there is that part. If we do anything like that, I'm still in charge of everybody who's here. So we get to make, or either me or my supervisors get to make the decision about how things go.
Chris, having looked over that, I guess, agreement, contract, last month, did they, there was some concern on some of the verbiage of who, yeah, the responsibility of paying out other departments, was that ever parsed out properly?
It's all just like the PA, like it says in the crimes code, the vehicle code, that it's, you pay for your own. So if someone gets hurt, if I send someone to...
I think it was more of the reimbursement from the other...
Yeah, there's no reimbursement.
Okay.
So you pay for your own officers. And this is outside of the SWAT, too. So there's also, we belong to a cert unit SWAT, whatever you want to call it, already. So all these mutual aids for those people are already in place with all the same rules and regulations. Just not quite as many people.
Is this in place now, or is the group waiting for a certain number of municipalities to approve participation?
This mutual aid agreement was approved, so we're just getting it signed now. So there's probably a lot of other people. It was supposed to be done last month, and at the last minute, a couple of lawyers chimed in. Nothing against lawyers, that's what they do. And they wanted to add a couple of things. No, I promise. So, so that's what happened. They listened to what they had to say, and they said, "No, you know, we're, we're good." So this is the final version now that you'll be signing eventually.
So the final, what we read last month, is the final version?
The same one.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Any other public questions? Okay, thanks, Chris. Moving on, Zach, I'll turn the program over to you for two new volunteers.
Sure. This is, so we have two here. One is for a new member, Kelly Dunia, from, for our Historic Commission. And the next is for Jamie Damiani for the Planning Commission. Both attended recent meetings of those commissions and were not scared off and would like to proceed with their membership on those two committees.
I jumped ahead too fast here. We do need to make a motion for approval on this.
I'll make a motion to approve the Chester County Police Chiefs Association Mutual Aid Plan Participation.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And passes. Now back to regularly scheduled commentary.
Yeah, so two new appointments, one to our Historic Commission, one to our Planning Commission to fulfill vacated terms from prior members. This is for Kelly Dunia through 2029, and Jamie Damiani to the Planning Commission through 2028. So separate motions, but just wanted to summarize at once.
Yep. Both good candidates. Any questions, concerns? Seeing none. Peter, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve Kelly Dunia to the Historical Commission for a term of four years, and to approve Jamie Damiani to the Planning Commission for a term of three years.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Catherine, another appointment for employee?
Yes, so we're pleased to advise that after a very rigorous application and interview process for the Code's Department Administrative Assistant position, we'd like to ask the Board to ratify the hiring and appointment of Michelle Davis to this role. Michelle comes to us with extensive operations, finance, and administrative experience, working mostly, most recently, as the Secretary to the Director of People's Services at the Methacton School District.
Again, any comments, concerns? Seeing none. Rich, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, make a motion to ratify the appointment of Michelle Davis Make a motion to ratify the appointment of Michelle Davis to codes as a full-time administrative assistant.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. John, if you can give us our latest update for repaving?
Yes. We had a problem with the first bid paperwork issue, and we were advised that the best way to go about it was to cancel that rebid. So we're asking for approval to advertise for the rebid of the paving project.
Simple. Peter, I'll make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve to advertise the rebid of the 2025 paving project.
Second that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes.
Okay, the next one's very simple, too. Asking for approval to advertise for the Gunkel Mill Roof replacement project.
This is our historical building on Moore's Road. Peter?
Yes.
Do you make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, advertise, to bid on the Gunkel Mill Roof Replacement Project.
Have a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next easy one for me is approval to advertise the sale of a truck. It's a 2012 F-750 dump truck, and that's on municipal.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to advertise on municipal bid, the sale of truck number 316, a 2012 Ford F-750 dump truck.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Getting shut out on the mics. Is there, is there another one open that's? That one up there?
Can I ask you a question? I'm at 72 bills away. When you're saying I for all these things, to the cost of these, we don't know. We're all sitting here, you're I, and you're okay, and how much money have we talked about? I don't, I don't.
We, this, this whole portion here was to authorize the advertisement of these items.
Okay, so then that's basically, you already have an idea of what's going on with the costs, and you've already.
We're, we're getting ready to go. So at the next meeting.
Greg, you've got another truck.
Yeah, this is just to ask the board to approve to advertise a 2017 F-150.
Peter, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve to advertise on municipal bid, 2017 F-150.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Catherine, if you can give us an update on our two upcoming ordinances?
Sure, yep. I'll start with proposed ordinance 372, which is for hotel maintenance. This would establish a new chapter to regulate hotels, motels, and ends within the township in order to safeguard health, safety, and welfare of guests, residents, and property. It mandates that all such establishments obtain an annual license, undergo regular inspections, and comply with specific operational and safety requirements, including things such as maintaining clean facilities, proper fire protection systems, a 30-day maximum stay limit, and staff presence for emergency response. The ordinance also outlines conditions for license suspension, denial, or revocation such as safety violations or high emergency call rates. So the request before the board this evening is a motion to advertise, excuse me, to authorize advertisement and schedule a public hearing for the June 11th Board of Supervisors meeting.
Any questions from the audience? Rich, you want to make a motion?
Sure. Motion to advertise ordinance 372 dash 2025 regarding hotel maintenance.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next ordinance is something that we're doing that no other township is doing in Chester County at this point in time. We're going to go out, we're going to try to promote and develop housing for middle to moderate income households in the community. And this ordinance is going to put in restrictions for any type of new development for apartments to meet certain criteria for the middle to moderate income folks. Again, it's a little groundbreaking. It's a first step and something that hopefully we'll be able to maybe craft better down the road, but we wanted to get something on the books at this point in time and, and promote this. So Catherine probably has more to say on that matter.
Yeah, this was a little bit more of a lengthy explanation, but I'll try to be brief. So as the chairman mentioned, this does create a new, it proposes to create a new section in the zoning ordinance titled workforce housing for targeted at middle and moderate income households. It is specific to zoning districts where apartments are permitted, and I'm just going to list those out for the benefit of the board and the public. So apartments are currently permitted in the residential medium density district, residential medium high density district, village mixed use district, regionally oriented district, which encompasses Uptown Worthington, Great Valley, yeah, Great Valley Revitalization District, which encompasses the PSDC and Gray Star Development, and the Corporate Gateway Overlay District, which encompasses the Arlo Apartments. And the proposal by TriPoint Properties at 52 East Swedesford Road zoning districts. It's worth noting that any existing development plans and those that are currently in the application process are probably not subject to these provisions, though, as the boards are aware, we have been working with the 52 East Swedesford Road property, which may have something very similar to what's proposed by this ordinance. The specific text requires that 10% to 20% of units in apartment developments that propose 100 or more units be designated as workforce housing, using a variety of federal, state, county, or private subsidies to ensure affordability. The units have to be integrated with market rate units and are visually indistinguishable from the rest of them, and have equal access to amenities. The apartment operator must give preference to existing residents or workers in the township, and developers must submit management plans ensuring affordability for at least 20 years. So the motion that's requested this evening is to authorize advertisement and schedule a public hearing at the June 11th Board of Supervisors meeting to consider adoption.
Any questions from the public? Carol?
Thank you. Although I understand, little, too little, too little, too little, too late, we don't need more housing. You're talking about if there's 100 units, I mean, honestly, we don't need more housing. We, we need the housing that you've already approved to be affordable. So to now say you're going to pass an ordinance for any future development where there could be 100 units, which is significant, I just feel like this township is too much. It's just too much. And so I'm, although I understand the intent, and it should have been here 10 years ago, probably, because all this housing going up is not affordable, but it's concerning because we sure don't need more development. So I just want to say that.
Any other comments? Peter, would you like to make a motion to advertise?
I'd like to make a motion to approve to advertise ordinance number 373-2025 for workforce housing.
Have a second?
That's for advertising.
For advertising.
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And passes for advertising.
That date would also be June 11th.
I guess, Greg, you're up again. Hi, DJ.
How about now? Perfect. So good evening, again. This is to update the current fire prevention code, which has not been updated since 2009. So the idea behind this ordinance is to get into the front of the new code cycles and update it to 2021 provisions on the fire code that are currently being forced elsewhere.
Sounds like a no-brainer.
This code is different from the requirements of the NFPA, right? The National Fire Protection Association?
The International Fire. There you go. The National Fire Code references the NFPA codes as well, so it kind of brings both together. So the current edition we're on is 2009 edition, which is citing standards from almost a decade ago that no longer exist or have new provisions that are safer and better for the environment or for the community. So the International Fire Code 2021 edition will have the new updated standards for building construction, fire code, and safety requirements.
Again, I think it's no-brainer, like you said, Peter. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve to advertise, to adopt an ordinance to update the existing fire prevention ordinance, Chapter 90, to the 2021 edition of the International Fire Code.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Catherine, you want to do this? Talking about the award of the Stream Bank Project.
Yes, the much anticipated MS4 PRP project. We're finally here. So three bids were received, and the low bid that we got was $1,085,980. And just as a reminder to the board and the community, this is for the three stream bank restoration projects to be done at Valley Creek Park, the township property right out here, and then also at Ecology Park, which does involve quite a bit of tree removal. So just as awareness for the board and for the residents here, you're going to see a lot of trees come down, but then also a lot of trees get planted. So that's a big hallmark of that project, in addition to the stream bank restoration itself. I'm pleased to say that through the very diligent work of the township engineer and also John Neeldar, Public Works Director, we're well under what was our estimate of $2 million. So it's almost half of what we were projecting. So it's a, it's a very good price for what it is, still a big number.
So this fulfills our current five-year requirement?
That's correct.
And that five-year requirement is through the end of '25?
We are required to start work, which could include authorizing this award tonight by a June deadline. So we're just in under the cutoff to get the work commenced under the last permit cycle.
And this would be scheduled to be completed by fall?
Yes, and by the end of September.
And for everyone, everyone in the audience, this is a requirement the state places upon us that we have to do. So we're being compliant at this point in time with this award. Any questions?
And also something we have budgeted for in this fiscal year.
Right. But I think we budgeted, as Catherine said, I think we budgeted for 2 million.
Yeah, so we have a, we, we did budget $2 million for this, and it's coming in at just over a million, so significant savings there.
Peter, you want to make a motion?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to award the MS4 Street Stream Bank Project, the contract to go to Flyway Excavating for the price of $1,085,980.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Zach, we are now into your expertise with planning and development.
Sure. So the first item here, we do not have any developments that are seeking approval here this evening. Second item is to review and potentially consider authorizing solicitor to draft a resolution of decision for the following applications. This is land development 11 of 2024. It's for a redevelopment in the Great Valley Corporate Center along Great Valley Parkway and Route 29. This is phase two of the previously referenced Philadelphia Suburban and Gray Star redevelopment of that tract of land. And I believe the applicant's attorney and consultant team is assembling here to provide a little overview of the project and answer any questions the board may have.
Come on in, Lou.
This is the first, I'm Luke Calagreco, representing Philadelphia Suburban Development Corporation. This is the first presentation before the board of the land development plan for approximately 304,000 square foot research and development building at the location that you just identified. It's right next to the project that's now under construction with the apartments. The board may recall that this, the entirety of this property was approved under a master plan concept showing the R and D building and the apartments. That is an ordinance requirement. That approval was given a couple of years ago. The apartments proceeded, and they're under construction. And now the R and D building is going through the land development process. We can do a, just a brief orientation, because I know that you haven't seen it probably for two years, the last time we showed the master plan, maybe even longer than that. The proposal, the land development proposal that followed the master plan approval is virtually identical to the building, the improvements that were shown on the master plan. But Paul, it might be good for you now to, if we have a slideshow here, Zach, that we can punch up. Paul Leopard, our planner, can walk you through both what the master plan depicted for, we're going to call it the second phase of the master plan development for ease of reference. The first phase, as I said, is the apartments. The second phase is the building on the corner with the parking garage, the R and D building with parking. So Paul, if there's more detail you can add, that would be helpful.
Sure. And good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is, again, Paul Leopard. I'm a principal with Nave Noel, and it's a pleasure to be back and to be moving forward with phase two of the Great Valley Corporate Center redevelopment project. As Lou mentioned, the slide that's showing right now is the initial master plan that was approved back in 2023. As Lou mentioned, there is apartments on the west side, approximately 15 acres. The total tract area associated with the master plan redevelopment is 25. And phase two is the portion on the east plan, east or the right side of the plan, which consists of an R and D building, 304,000 square feet, four-story building, and a five-level parking deck for 814 parking spaces. That's both the garage and the surface parking to serve the R and D building. So as the Gray Star project advanced, we realized that the building configuration on phase one wasn't going to quite work out. So if you want to flip to the next slide, just again by background, oh, but what I wanted to point out as part of this master plan process, it's important to point out that certain plan programming requirements were established. I want to highlight several of them. The brighter orange line work on the south and east side of the plan is a multimodal trail and pedestrian way. On the portion of Route 29, it consists of a linear park as well as the multimodal trail. So it's a combination of, of, you know, you know, pedestrian way, bike way, seating area, landscaping, and a series of gateways along, along Route 29 to help establish a sense of identity. A major gateway is at the intersection of Great Valley Parkway and Route 29, where the kind of the bullseye blue circle. bullseye blue circle is. And then, there were going to be some secondary gateways down 29 to the north, and then a second minor gateway at the intersection of Lap Road and Old Moore Hall Road. So, it's important to kind of point that out, because that was kind of the fabric that, as the master plan developed on both phases, there were certain elements required as part of the overlay that needed to be implemented into the plan. And so, next slide. I show the linear park precedent, because this was kind of what the thinking was relative to the establishment of the corporate linear park along Great Valley Parkway, which, again, there's a multimodal ordinance, which requires both opportunities for pedestrians as well as bike. And so, we wanted to incorporate that in a way where we could segregate bike traffic and pedestrian traffic so that they could coexist safely. We pulled it from this precedent, because we thought that the tangential alignment of the bike trail particularly would help slow bike traffic where we had pedestrian traffic. And again, this is right on the heels of COVID and people wanting to be outside. And so, we really were focusing on making the Great Valley Parkway frontage a pedestrian and bike-friendly area with landscaping. And so, that was the precedent for the multimodal trail that's along Great Valley Parkway. And that was, again, to be integrated as the land development plans for Phase Two developed. We can jump to the next slide.
I have a question. As we're looking at this, and it's the linear park, and it's showing all the trees, you know, one of the concerns that this board has right now is in the design on the land development is the tree removal aspects are above the ordinance allowable ordinance. You're building a linear park, but you're taking all the trees down underneath it, and you're showing pictures with trees here. Just an observation at this point in time.
Yeah, it's a fair, it's a fair, it's a fair comment. And that's why we're, that's why we're here kind of discussing, again, some of the precedent that kind of went into the, into the thinking. And I think the next slide is kind of adding to, adding to the layer a little bit. I'm not going to dwell on this one too much. This is the site plan. And just what kind of pops out a little bit is, again, the multimodal trail alignment along Great Valley Parkway, as well as on the south side. So, these are all kind of programming elements that are ordinance-driven, that we're incorporating into the plan. We can jump to the next slide real quick. This is the illustrative. Again, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time, but if you do look at the right-hand side, you can see that the trail design is somewhat more developed. We're responding to some of the grading constraints and feedback. You know, the preference was to be able to pull the trail off-road as much as we could for that segment between Old Moore Hall Road and Great Valley Parkway to address both grading concerns relative to the trail, to keep it as flat as possible, and to provide separation as much as we can at that location. So, it kind of pulled inbound. And then, you know, similarly, I think also want to point it out here, and I'll reinforce it. You'll see that there's a green, a green band or a verge between the edge of the cartway and the trail. And it's pretty much a 20-foot expanse. That's, that's a utility quarter that's full of, full of everything. Two fiber optic lines, water lines, sewer lines, electric lines, telecom. And it's all packed in that 20 feet off the curb line along the perimeter of the property. The challenge is, ideally, we'd like to put the trail there. The utility companies don't want parallel improvements on top of their utilities. And so, we purposefully pushed the trail inbound. And in pushing it inbound inherently creates and presents the challenge of some of the tree removal that we're facing. That does not suggest that, you know, we're not willing to assess the trail, its configuration. Do we need to segregate it as much as we are in order? Can we weave it in a different orientation to promote as much or to reduce potential impacts as much as possible? I think there's the opportunity to do, to do that. But there, the challenges that we're facing implementing, you know, a lot of stakeholders, the utility companies, ordinance, the developer, and it's all kind of coming together. And that's the framework that's behind there. So, I just want to, want to set that up there. We just didn't arbitrarily put it in without thinking about it. That doesn't mean that it's fully, fully baked yet, because there's going to be ultimately tenant input that may have some impact as well. But I think it's important to kind of lay that foundation where we were looking to be as sensitive and accommodating as we can. But then, the practical implementation of that improvement creates inherent challenges, which I think we're bore out in some of the narrative discussions between our office and the consulting team. However, in the last round of review letters, Land Concepts, TCA, were pretty aligned in their support of, of the plan. There were some incidental cleanup that is customary, but nothing substantive. That being said, we do have a compens, require, a tree replacement requirement. We had Rockwell, an arborist, certified arborist, John Hosback, go out to the site, prepare a comprehensive tree survey, and consistent, well, not consistent, the observations were, again, the site was originally developed back in the mid-'80s or earlier, and the vegetation is expressing itself in that it's in decline. Majority of the trees are either dead or dying. The 92, 63 or so are in that condition, and there are 29 trees that he's suggesting would be worthy of replacement. Our intention is, again, to comply with the replacement criteria. Dave Cavanaugh did a very nice job in his review suggesting, you know, and it comes forward in our waiver request, to allow for some flexibility in the replacement trees with a combination of understory trees, evergreen trees, and shrubs in order to get away from strictly just a tree replacement criteria. So, getting a little more biodiversity and aesthetic benefit out of it. So, you know...
Some of that was, some of that was the limitation of where you could put them due to utilities and stuff.
Correct. It was, it was, it was a good observation in terms of, you know, the competition of the tree replacement and what impacts that that was having. So, I thought it was a reasonable and well-conceived comment. And, but, you know, so we, we are looking to, you know, meet the spirit of the, of the ordinance with respect to, you know, tree clearing and tree replacement. You know, again, a majority of the trees are not in good condition. But to the extent there are specific areas of interest that you would like us to study further, we certainly are open to doing that and making modifications in order to address, you know, particularly the larger trees that are, that are, you know, along the Great Valley Parkway frontage. That was always our intent and our goal. But again, knitting together the fabric, we've got some challenges there.
I was fascinated by the comment, I know John's not here to comment on this, but maybe you can a little bit, that you guys are willing to do root pruning and limb pruning to potentially preserve some larger trees.
So...
Putting a three-year moratorium on them that they'll survive.
Well, we thought that was a responsible way of, you know, recognizing that in certain instances, we, we knew that impacts to the root zone were going to be unavoidable in certain locations. And so, it was appropriate to address the, you know, the crown mass proportionate to the impact to the root zone. And so, you know, and then, if we wanted to acknowledge that despite everyone's best efforts, these trees have been sitting in a landscape undisturbed for decades. They may, good news is the most of them are sycamores, and as a floodplain tree, they're a little more tolerant to disturbance than other trees. So, you know, we have that going for us, but we didn't want to be, you know, cavalier, so to speak, to say, oh, we did our best, tree's dead, too bad. And so, we're trying to be good stewards and say, look, we've done, we did our best, we tried our best, the tree still didn't make it, so we will replace that tree.
I appreciate that, that verbiage in your, in the comments.
Are all those, those trees that are depicted on this sketch, those are all new?
So, Mr. Orlo, it's, it's a combination of existing trees and proposed trees. The, the artist didn't distinguish between existing trees and proposed. There are not, at least along the perimeter of the site, on the east, north, and west sides. That's heavily proposed. There are a handful, maybe eight to 12 relic trees along Great Valley Parkway that are, we're trying our best to preserve. And again, you know, to the extent we have to revisit the alignment of the trail, reach out to our friends at the utility company to see if they allow certain segments to have a parallel crossing. We're willing to have, you know, do those explorations, but understand if they say no, the sidewalk and trailer is going to be about 20 feet back from the edge of, edge of roadway in order to stay clear of their facilities.
Is the trail intended to be asphalt or concrete?
The trail, the moldy trail, the bike trail is, is by ordinance required to be blocktop. The sidewalk would, would be concrete and potentially, you know, certain areas like the entranceway off to the northeast corner, again, the overlay district requires that to be a public access. And so, it has a courtyard associated with it, which, again, we know there are some existing trees there. We were conservative. We didn't want to, we assumed the worst. So, we were conservative in the tree clearing, because we didn't, we didn't want to over, overcommit and under-deliver. So, we thought it, there was going to be an impact, and there's a fair amount of grading there that those, those existing trees at the corner weren't going to go.
How wide is the multimodal trail?
That is eight feet, and then there's a five, five-foot sidewalk. Actually, maybe 10. It's eight to 10. You have to bear with me, I can't recall.
How far down 29 Moore Hall Road does the trail continue?
So, the, on Moore Hall, Route 29, it extends the entire length. This is the, the segment that will go in as Phase One on the right-hand side. But that continues all the way down to the end of the Gray Star parcel on the south, on the north side of the Lap Road extension.
It would be very difficult, but I don't know if you look to see whether there was a reasonable and somewhat safe route to reach Chester Valley Trail. I'm not sure, other than continuing down 29 on the shoulder, which I've done, but it's not very safe.
There is, so as part of this, as Paul mentioned, as you go down 29, and maybe I'll scroll up here just to orient people. So, this is flipped now. This is Great Valley Parkway. It would extend from the area that we were just looking at here, down the rest of 29. This road extension into the Corporate Center at Valley Creek Park. So, like, this whole little network, mini-network would connect into Valley Creek Park. And then, at points west of here, the, the trail would connect into the trail that's being proposed by the Knickerbocker, that's being developed by the Knickerbocker Development. The townhouse is there. That would extend westward across that tract, and then pick up with our Sidley Mill Road, Chester Valley Trail connection. So, I probably have some old exhibits that show all these dotted lines going in different directions. Ultimately, you know, within, within a couple of years, you'd be able to get from the corner of Great Valley Parkway all the way down to the firehouse and to the Chester Valley Trail.
Max, clarification? You just... Excuse me.
If you could talk...
I actually want to say anything. You're going to need to come up and identify yourself in your address.
Kate Stauffer, 64 Fonstock Road. When you went to the west, on the right side of Moore Hill is the west. On the other side is Valley Creek Park.
Yep.
And how are you getting from the west side, crossing over Valley Creek, crossing over Moore Hill or 29 to Valley Creek Park?
Yeah, so as part of this Phase One development, where the apartment buildings are being, there's actually got a road extension that connects Route 29 to Old Moore Hall. Think of the road that comes around the backside of Chick-fil-A and Starbucks into like the back, the southern side of the Corporate Center. So, there's a trail, not only along Route 29, but along this road extension. And then, you would cross and kind of go through the Knickerbocker tract to the west.
But come, come, come east?
Yeah. There, as part of this project, they're building a connection across Route 29.
And how, how are people getting across 29 at that point?
So, there's a trail that kind of runs around the perimeter of all this site that we're talking about here. There's a crosswalk at Route 29 at the new signal that's going to be constructed there, and then a little trail stub that leads you into the park that we could then pick up as part of a township project.
So, we're coming from the north to the south, down that hill at 70 miles an hour, and people are going to stop at a light?
If somebody's doing 70 miles an hour on Route 29...
Have you driven that road?
I have, yes.
And we talked to the dump truck, the people who drove the dump trucks. We were here that night, East Whiteland Township, and...
Yes, we did talk.
They were here for something else, and it's, it's a, yeah. And you're driving a bike around here. They're not going to, they're not going to be able to stop. I think, and we have said this before at a couple of meetings ago, that's an insane crosswalk, and stuff's going to happen. I think that you should rethink that. Oh, I do have to say one more thing. Just because we were hit by a drunk driver, and my husband died because of his injuries, what drunk is going to come down from? I know it's illegal. People do it, though. Please rethink that, please.
Just, we'll be flipped to the next slide. I think then the next, maybe, yeah. So, again, just, just again, these were the existing trees that have been surveyed, and again, the Rockwell report runs along with that. There are a handful, again, on... Just wanted to kind of point, point out that the survey's in place, and we can, we can reassess. And I think the next slides may offer, again, a little more detail on the utility, but we've kind of touched on that. There's some imagery, a couple of slides down, Zach, that, you know, highlight the least conceptual thinking on the building architecture. least conceptual thinking on the building architecture.
Zach, can you just slide that up? Paul, so, so on the, on the east side of, behind the research building, right there, yeah, back. So, essentially, all the trees along 29, going from north to south, are planned to be removed, from what I've seen of the plan.
I would say a majority, if not all, yes.
So, that would remove all of those, I know there are some, some really worn-down trees and they probably need to go. But it removes all trees, so there's a direct sightline into this potential new building. So, what I hear a lot, like along 29, is with the other building that's being built there, all the trees were removed and the sightline for a couple of years is going to be very, very unattractive.
Yeah.
I'm glad to hear you're saying, like, part of it is the, is the walking trail. Maybe we can work around saving some of it.
Yeah, there's a grade change that's happening that we're trying to accommodate. And again, that's kind of a relic hedgerow, a mixed bag of stuff, including, like Osage orange is in there, ash is in there. And, yeah, in order to get the trail up at a reasonable slope, we had to take it off-road and that's kind of part of, part of the challenge, but we'll look close. There was, again, preference to open up that view shed, so in order to promote a line of sight from 29. But we're more than happy to kind of reevaluate that and take a look. There's, you know, a good, good couple of trees in there that we can work around, we will look at that.
Might be helpful periodically to meet at the site to actually walk it and see where that, especially the sidewalk, I guess, on the corner that cuts the corner behind the Karen sign.
Sure.
It seemed that they could be saved, but wouldn't hurt to walk it.
Yep, we're happy to set up that site for you and walk that and, and so we understand or know which trees have caught your eye that you would, you would like to take us to take a closer look at.
Rich, I think that's a really good idea. Zach and I were out there today in the rain and we took a lot of pictures and trying to compare what's on there versus, so I think a site visit really does help identify a lot of this. And we can talk about it, if you're willing to do that.
Yep.
Once it stops raining.
Yes.
I had some questions on the historical, historical commission's review and I guess we just seeing a rendering of, you know, what the old 29 restaurant would look like from the Parkway. Just, how's that going to be addressed?
Well, one of the, I mean, Paul alluded to it earlier, one of, you can tell we're caught in between here, the trail system and which underwent, if we went back and looked at review letters on that trail system, it probably is the most reviewed trail next to, I don't know, pick a popular trail. But we can go back and take a look at it again, but some of the other comments we received is, open up the view shed from 29 back to those buildings. Well, there's only one way you can open up the view shed from 29 back to those buildings. So, you know, we're sort of being driven in different directions here. But as far as that is concerned, I think what I'm hearing is, to the extent that there's mature trees out there, let's see what we can do about the mature trees, saving those trees, maybe winding the trail in a different location, maybe there's going to be some flexibility on the width of the trail. There's going to have to maybe be a little bit of back and forth on that, but we can take a look at that. But as far as the design of the building, the, and our client's been very clear with this and he was with the planning commission, he said, look, there's a representative architectural design that we filed with the application. It shows a glass structure, fairly modernistic, four-story building. That is, can change. And according to our historical consultant, that if that facade does change, that's going to have a bearing, obviously, on the impact of the adjacent properties, so.
I wasn't referring to what, how the building's going, look, it's just, is how, I think what I'm trying to read into the historical commission letters, how is, how is the public still going to be able to view the historical structure from 29 and Great Valley Parkway?
They'll see some of it, they won't see all of it.
It's going to be pretty hidden.
There's going to be a building there.
There's going to be two big buildings, I'm guessing, yeah.
But remember, there were buildings there before.
And I understand.
So, you know, it's.
I guess what I'm fishing for is, is it possible to get kind of a, you guys do magic with these slides, I was wondering if it's possible to get that rendering, is what I was saying. I think.
You mean a view shed in, you know, what a perspective sightline would be in? Yeah, we can do that, that's not, that's not hard to put together.
I thought that's what they were kind of asking here.
Yeah, there's no doubt about it. I mean, some of the building view shed will be shielded as it was when the corporate center was built, some of it will be opened up to vistas that weren't there previously. But, you know, we can do representative sightlines into the site.
During the historical meeting and back and forth and that was, was interesting, but I know there's going to be another meeting between you folks and historical, but their big thing was the main area where they have the wedding vows occur.
Yeah.
The view is going to be right into the refuge area at the south portion of the research building. And the committee had talked about numerous ways to try to relocate the use of the refuge area to another location, so that the wedding, the 29 building wouldn't, wouldn't be looking in that direction. So, I don't know if there's any, any new direction or ideas that has come.
We actually looked at that, Scott, and I think Paul can explain it better than I, but it's actually worse if you relocate the loading area for reasons that Paul can better explain.
There were, there were three potential locations that the historical commission asked for consideration, which was, one was at the southwest corner of the R and D building. That was one, at that location, which again, puts it right at the, right at the front door and similar proximity, that little circular element to the east side, that, yeah, that's the existing gazebo. And so, that would stage the loading activities right there at the corner of the building, which in our opinion, has a much more prominent impact on the operations. The other was on the southeast corner of the L on the west, Plan West, just past the underpass or the pedestrian connector off of the main entrance. Given the opposing driveway interior to the parking structure and a loading area in that location, there's just not sufficient maneuvering area for WB, you know, 40 truck to navigate in and out. And again, that's then also has a very front and center presentation. So, the intention relative to the existing loading area was to put it as far away from the facilities as practical, so it would have the least amount of impact. We've recessed a portion of it so that, you know, the dock portion is going to be internal and so it pushes the truck back interior to, a portion of the truck interior to the building, so it's notched. And there's opportunity for us to augment the landscaping in that green island on both the left and right side of the loading bay, as well as augmenting the landscaping on the drive aisle side to provide some additional greening, to the extent that we can. Lou alluded to a little bit of push and pull, preferences not to rely on evergreens, but I think there's an interest in, in some screening opportunities. So, if there's a little bit of give and take there, I think we can introduce some additional landscape solutions that would help mitigate that location. And again, you know, we don't know, well, I'll, never mind, I'll just leave it there. Thanks.
So, the rest of the review letters we got on this are remarkably clean. I mean, I've never seen a narrow review letter as clean as this one from an engineering perspective. The PennDOT process, the PennDOT permit is being reviewed by the department. They're already pretty familiar with the improvements here by virtue of the review of the, you know, the Gray Star improvements. So, there's, we've seen no surprises from PennDOT, they've seen no surprises from us. So, that process is well underway.
Lou, did you say your traffic engineer's here?
Yeah. Unless he decided to leave, there he is.
And before you wrapped up, I had some questions for him.
Sure, Eric.
Just, just before you get into it, can I have lady, young lady come?
I'm back on the trees, sorry guys. Something, something came up, Deb Mobile, 42 Village Way. Back to the trees. Trees are important and I commend you for your dedication to the trees. But a bush is not a tree. They talked about replacing trees with bushes for aesthetic reasons. The trees are there because the trees provide the root system which keeps the Great Valley from washing out to the sea. They're also there to provide deciduous leaves in particular, to divide us a way to clean some of our carbon footprint on this planet and to breathe clean air and to provide the root systems clean water. So, a bush doesn't really provide that. It's, it's, they're mostly, most of the bushes you choose nowadays aren't even indigenous to the area, you know, they're cute and I got them, I got some, you know, I like my hydrangeas and stuff like that. But you need to consider that a tree needs to be replaced with a tree. And I don't know what the township's formula is, but a little, even six, even 12-foot little thing being held up by posts is not the same as an old-growth tree. And it's going to be decades, well after I am gone, before it's going to be providing benefit. So, when you ask for replacement trees, you should be asking for a boatload of them. Thank you.
On the traffic, correct?
Yes.
Just the questions I have in the Baumann letter for some clarification.
Sure.
I guess the first.
412 letter? 415, sorry.
415.
Yeah.
Yeah. The first one, proposed trail along south side of Great Valley Parkway, just to orient you, the first page.
Yes.
Could you just kind of clarify the variable alignment with the multiple angle points and rather than the curve alignment, I guess the gentle curve versus zigzag? Is that, is that because of the utilities?
Yeah, it's due to the utilities in part in terms of the placement. And then again, if you recall, we kind of talked about separating the buck, the bike trail from the pedestrian trail. And the thought to having these kind of tangential segments was to slow the prospect of bikes running through the frontage at quick speed, where we're going to have people walking and maybe sitting down. So, to have the curves and the turns was to help kind of be a bike calming device. But, you know, to the extent that we soften them and they're not angular, that's something that we would, we can accommodate. But that was the thought process behind it. I mean, I've been on the, on the trail cycling and I'm psyched, I'm surprised at the speed that some folks go through with little disregard for their patrons on the trail. So, that was the thought process.
Okay. Zach, I have a question for you, and this is my lack of education on this. Is it required they have a bike and walking path trails for this site?
I think in terms of what's shown there, that was more their, there's not an explicit requirement that says there's got to be separate sidewalk and trail. I think their intent was to kind of try to separate the two paths so that, like, to Paul's point, that people on bikes weren't directly conflicting. If somebody's coming on a bike, somebody could wait on the sidewalk.
They're required to have sidewalk, so therefore there's a sidewalk and the trail.
There's not a requirement for there to be two separate ones that weave in and out of each other, it was more of like their artistic approach.
That, that makes sense. Okay. Anybody else have questions there, Rich?
Yeah, on that, follow up on that, the, there's no, the only residential near this area is the new Gray Star. Everything else around Great Valley Parkway, it's all commercial. I just wonder how much of a need there will be for a bike trail there. The connection down to the Chester Valley Trail, that's wonderful. But probably the only users I would think will be in the apartments. It might be, A, be able to save with, by combining the bike and the pedestrian. Odds are.
Just having a sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, or the bike, one or the other, yeah. But to combine them, yeah, I don't know who is going to start at that area on a bike. I don't know. I don't know if you gave that any thought.
Zach, can you have just a sidewalk and not a bike trail or a asphalt trail?
Yeah, I should probably clarify a little bit my previous comment. We have a sidewalk requirement that applies to all projects along the side of the road. This, I believe what the intent here is more to implement the design guidelines in the overlay that allows all this type of development to happen. We can certainly work with them if there's a way that we can free up some space, especially to kind of save some of those trees. I think some of the challenge with the trail, I think Paul alluded to, is that the utilities push the sidewalk a little bit further inbound, which pushes it closer to the trees, so there's, there's multiple factors. But I certainly think we can talk about what, what should take predominance there, if there's a way to make just a trail and to kind of accessorize it, so to speak, with some of these linear park elements, I think that's certainly worth something exploring.
The only thing I wanted to add to, I wanted to maybe clarify something that Paul said. I wanted to disabuse anybody of the notion that, that these utilities are going to allow a linear asphalt coverage of their utility network. In 40 years, I've never seen that happen. I don't think it's going to happen here. There's a lot of stuff running underneath that area, so that's going to be sort of off limits. But all of the other suggestions, that's what we were talking about, if there's a way to reduce asphalt, reduce concrete, save trees, you know, that certainly can be looked at over the next week or so.
Steve, if you can come up and speak into the mic.
Steven Schmid, 64 Fonstock Road. Just as a practical comment, any cyclist is going to use that road because they go into the balance of the park to ride, so get rid of the bike trail. It's, it's dangerous.
I'm not sure I can. I'm holding hold of plans, so.
Steve, all I have to do is ask Rich, danger. Do you have a question?
I just have a comment.
Comment.
Nick Stoffer, 64 Fonstock Road. I'm just confused by the entire point of this because we have so many apartments and residential and commercial buildings that are not fully inhabited in the area, Atwater, at Waltham Worthington, East Side Flats, which I know is in this jurisdiction, the Yards where the bowling alley used to be, the thing at the end of, was it 352? And I just don't understand why we're doing this, especially 29 is already a nightmare. when it comes to rush hour traffic and we're adding more lights. I think they're dealing with a sinkhole problem near the walla. The off-ramp for the turnpike is constantly having problems. There's the constant quarry work, and there are quarries surrounding it. So they keep taking the land out from under it, and it's, they're doing it by the books, fine, whatever, but sinkholes, I mean, right now in King of Prussia, there's 202 is just shut down because they were like, eh, well, we'll fill in the sinkhole, it's fine, and it doesn't work. And if they're getting rid of more trees, more concrete, there's less things on the earth to absorb water, it's just going to flood out to other places, it's going to flood out quarries, it's going to erode the quarries. I just don't understand what the point of this is. So, thank you.
Lou, there's, there's, there's two questions that I just wanted to ask if you could comment on. At this point in time, under what you're proposing, we don't have any really architectural design per se of the building and what type of R and D that is being proposed for this 300,000 square foot building.
Yeah, on the, I started to allude to it earlier, but on the architectural, what we would suggest is the same suggestion that the planning commission endorsed, and that was, you know, prior to either final plan, recordation, or building permit issuance, whatever, that when you actually have a tenant who actually designs the exterior of this building, that that's when the comments on architecture would be most prevalent. Right now, we'd be shooting fish in a barrel. I could come in here and say it's going to be a four-story brick building, and we'd all get excited about that or not excited about it. And then all of a sudden, somebody comes along and says, well, I want two stories of glass. So I think the more appropriate, we're not trying to avoid the conversation, but certainly I think when we have a design to fit, it would be the more appropriate time to have that discussion. And we're obviously, wouldn't proceed to recordation until we had the, you know, the township's buy-in on that. I just, I just think it'd be a waste of everybody's time and money right now to get excited about something that may never happen.
Type of R and D? Any speculation on that?
The only thing I've heard, and it might answer, partially answer the gentleman's question who was just up here, why this here? What we are seeing, and we've been involved, as you know, in the, my goodness, I was around for the original corporate center development. I can't even imagine I'm here for the redevelopment. I'm glad I am. But the interest in the corporate center has been, it's no key, or it's no secret, it's been pharmaceutical driven. I mean, you have some very powerful, prominent companies that are repopulating and repurposing the corporate center. I think the township's very fortunate when you look around at other corporate centers that are dead, dying, done, and they're not coming back. This one, I think, is going to do very, very well. But the interest is in, I'll call it soft R and D because, and don't ask me to even describe what that means, but it's consistent with the move that we've seen away from, you know, just the regular office building, which nobody seems to be building anymore, to a more use-specific driven building. Again, when we have a tenant lined up, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to come in and share what kind of R and D they do. But great jobs, great paying jobs, great revitalization. If you're going to think of things to revitalize the corporate center with, there's only so many uses that you can put in there. And I know you don't, I know a couple of them that you don't want. So, you know, that sort of, sort of sets the stage for where we are now, which I think is great. I mean, I think that this kind of use should be embraced. Otherwise, God knows what's going to end up in that center.
Agreed. I have another question for the traffic engineer. If Scott's, Scott's thing is trees, my thing is site distances. And just on the Baumann letter, just, what can you say about how are, if, how they're being addressed?
So the comment I think you're referring to is just to note on the plan, the site distance that would be maintained there. So we evaluated the site distance for the access points. There's adequate site distance out there. Chris's comment is to note that on the plan, that they'll be maintained in perpetuity.
Great. I guess the last one is just, how are you guys going to handle the bus stop? I guess potential bus stop.
As we move into the harder design with PennDOT, we engage SEPTA for determining the kind of treatment they would like to see for the bus stop. As you probably know, SEPTA is really looking at their programming lately. When we discussed Gray Star with them, they didn't give us an indication on the bus stops till later in the process. But we did incorporate two bus pads down on the south end at the lap road extension as part of that design. So they'll be evaluating the programming in the area. The last I spoke with them, they were looking at more of an on-demand model for this area. But there is, there is a bus shelter there, likely would either need to be upgraded or at least maintained, but we'll coordinate with them as we get into the hard design.
Yeah, I just want to make sure there's a decent bus stop for hopefully its use if there is buses still.
Yeah, absolutely. So when we, when we go into our hard design, we typically copy SEPTA to engage them and then meet with them and discuss what they'd like to see.
Yeah, I just have one other comment. East Whiteland, good or bad, for good or bad, is, is the center of, I think, as many, more major roads. And that's what attracts people, to live here, to get here, to work here, to want to build here. We have 29, 30, 202, the turnpike, 401, 352. We have a solid school district. Those are the items that attract us. I think we're only second that I can think of to King of Prussia, which has four, you know, the confluence of 422, 76, the turnpike, major, major roads. I think we have, yeah, and that's why people want to congregate here. These roads have been here forever, and they just get widened. We tried 30, but we don't have the money for that. But I think when, you know, there's a concern about development, that's a pressure point that points to East Whiteland, I've always thought.
The other thing, Rich, to pick up on that, I just remembered, the township is holding $4 million in security for these Phase II road improvements. So you remember, you all insisted on that when the Phase I development was put in. So these improvements will happen. I mean, they are escrowed, there's money sitting in some account somewhere with East Whiteland's name on it for $4 million to make sure that those improvements that Eric's talking about, you know, do occur. It's just a question of timing, when is it going to happen? So that's it. I mean, I, I think we got our walking instructions here tonight, this was helpful. Zach will be in touch, probably do some sort of site walk or something for these guys to go over this trail issue, the tree issue. Other comments, I didn't see the need to resubmit any plans any further than what we've done. The reviews are clean. But we will take a look at the landscape issue and hopefully be back before you next month in June requesting a recommendation. Okay?
I think just from a procedural standpoint, the, an extension was offered into June to make a decision, assuming that things would be sort of authorized tonight to move into June. So we would need an extension to carry it beyond that, assuming it'd be, let's just say, in June, everyone's comfortable with what's been resolved. In the meantime, it'd be more like a July decision, so we would need an extension at least into-
So are you still meeting the second Wednesday of July, or is that date in flux?
As far as I know, we-
Okay, I will send that tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you. I think that's on the agenda later, isn't it, the extension to July 13?
Yep.
If you want, I can just do that right now.
June 13th.
Oh, June 13th, whatever the second Wednesday of July is.
So we can authorize it on the record, we'll still need something for the file, of course, but that's a good point. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Lou, I think we've got two more resident's comments, maybe just come forth again.
Nick Stauffer, 64 Fonstock Road again. I'll be quick because I'm actually missing roller derby practice for this. I think you answered my question, what's the point of this? You said they don't have a tenant lined up. We have empty corporate buildings that could be demolished and maybe turned into this where there's already existing infrastructure and stuff. I don't, again, you have to run water and power and all this stuff to something that's been abandoned for 20-plus years. Since you already leveled the ground, if you don't mind, maybe put a roller rink there because Chester County is one of the richest counties in America, and we don't have a roller rink, and that's kind of embarrassing. So I got to go, thank you very much.
Carol Rapp, 89 Village Way. Zach, can you point out the barn? I think I know which, okay. So the barn now, and I have eaten in that restaurant before, so now they're going to look out and see a four-story warehouse? Because all the trees are going to be cleared. Is that, because I don't remember the view being like something really unattractive, like, so now, to me, that's what they're going to be looking out at?
Yeah, it would not be a warehouse, but the, the existing office buildings that were there, there's one sort of at each corner and one sort of in the middle. So it was three one-story office buildings there and the existing parking areas. Those buildings were demolished, so looking out, you know, to the north, towards the top of the screen, they would be looking at the parking garage and the R and D building.
And the parking garage is how tall?
That is five levels as it's currently proposed.
Oh, good lord. So we took down one-story buildings and we're going to put up a five-story and a four-story?
That's correct. That's what they're proposing.
I'm with Nick. Care, tear down something that's already not being used. Why are we destroying all this landscape?
Just to clarify, that is what they've done here. I understand the point, and I think it's a very good point. We do have concerns about rising vacancy. But just to be clear, that is what this is. This is a redevelopment of a previously developed office site where infrastructure exists, where buildings once existed, where people once worked. So that is what this is. But I do very much understand the point, and I think it's a valid one. We should be looking at ways to redevelop areas that were previously developed, not ones that are currently undeveloped.
Because it's very shocking to come down 29 where they've cleared that whole area.
Yep.
And it's like, oh my God, what happened to the woods and all the wildlife that was living there? And, and, you know what I mean? And now you're going to do it again in this whole section? And bushes are not trees. I agree. So you get rid of mature trees, you're, it's decades to get that back. I, I don't know, I just, it's just so disappointing just to come down, the first time I came down 29 and just saw all that area cleared out. I was like, you've got to be kidding me.
I don't, I don't disagree.
It's too much.
These are, those two areas of the site are certainly very different, but I agree with, visually, it was, it was pretty jarring. So I don't disagree with that point. This is a plan that has been downsized over time, which I think is worth noting. At one point, the historic house and barn were to be demolished, and there was going to be a much larger development scenario. So for the last seven years probably, at least since I've been here, we've been working with the new owner to try to downsize that in terms of the height of the buildings, the intensity of development, the number of hotel rooms, apartments, square feet of office, a conference center that was previously envisioned. So this is a much, much, much smaller scale development than was originally approved there, that has an approval in place. So I just feel like that's worth noting for context, that what this board has done over the last couple of years is worked only to downsize the amount of development that was proposed at this location. But all very valid points about undeveloped land, about trees, et cetera. But this is much smaller than it was previously.
We can also say no, no development. You know what I mean? So downsizing is great, but five stories and four stories, too much.
Got another comment?
Jeff Jones, 97 Village Way. What's your name, sir? Orla? So in reference to your, how many great roads we have here, so you guys continue to allow people to build high-density living structures all over the place, but you do zero to improve all these roads. Zero. I haven't seen one widened road. I can't get down Route 30 anymore because, you know, the aforementioned structure that used to be where the bowling alley is, that's all jagged up. Then let's go a little farther down past Ship Road. How many houses did, is that West Whiteland? How many houses did they build there? Build, 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 but you do zero for the roads. I haven't seen one road widened, one turn lane put in. And in reference to Mr. Stauffer, you know, and the DUI and what's legal and what's not legal, I ride motorcycles. What should be legal is I should be allowed to shoot people who cut me off because they don't like to stop at stop signs or red lights. So, and I believe we had somebody get obliterated on 29 by a 90-ton dump truck because they did something stupid in front of it. So, you know, you guys might want to consider all this stuff when we're build, build, building and putting in trails. So, thank you.
We've, we've got two, two applications we've put in. One, four years ago, for $27 million federal grant for improvements between Plainbrook and Church Road. We were finalists. Second year, we were finalists, we didn't get it. But in the meantime, we've acquired $10 million worth of grant money from the state, from the state and from our local authorities. And we are going through preliminary engineering for improvements at 352 and 30 up to Plainbrook. Keep in mind, that's, that's a state road.
I know.
And we're having to spend the money and get the grant, but there, we're looking at, and that's part of the reason, that's part of the reason why this board turned down two opportunities previously for apartments along Route 30. Okay? They were looked at, we turned them down because we wanted to see road improvements on 30, because we agree with you that it's a problem, it's problematic.
We're 10 years behind the eight ball.
Right. So we are, you know, we are, we've got the funding and we're moving forward with engineering for improvements on Route 30. So, you know, just, just, I mean, you're saying we're not doing anything, but, but we are.
I understand that some of your hands are tied because they all, every road that he did mention is a state road, and the state doesn't like to spend the 78 cents a gallon in tax money that I pump into my truck every day. But, you know, the people, previous, you know, all that should have been thought ahead. You know, because I know our sewer plant, which got sold to Aqua, thank you very much, because now that bill keeps going up for me, at some point, that plant's going to have to be upgraded because you're going to exceed the capacity of that plant. Your water plants, you know, pretty soon, we're going to have to re-update all the electrical. All this stuff takes energy, takes resources, and, you know, and where's it all landed? Our tax dollars, and then out of our pockets. You know, the whole, you know, let's help the working man with some of these, you know, $3,000 apartments. You're 10 years behind that eight ball, too.
Yeah.
You know, you've chased out all the people that built this township.
Just keep in mind, West Whiteland has four and a half times more new building permits than we have.
Okay. I feel that East Whiteland and West Whiteland are trying hard to become King of Prussia or Upper Darby. I don't know which, but, you know, let's pour more concrete and tear down more trees.
Thank you. Any other comments on this topic? All right, seeing none, then we shall run. Zach, you want to?
Sure. So item 5C here, these are extensions of time to render decisions. These are offered by the applicant because the deadline is actually on the township to act, not on the applicant to offer. We have to request it, that's the way the, the state regs are set up. So I'll just list these four quickly. Somebody tells me at least one of these, there's some, some comments and questions on, but I'll just run through them quickly. The first one is the Si Temple Project on Plainbrook Road and Prospect. They've offered an extension through June 30th, too, and they've resubmitted their plans in response to some of the discussion at the last meeting. We have begun working on a resolution for that, so it should be in a position to be acted upon at the next meeting. The second one here is what we just talked about. They've offered an extension, I believe that would be through July 9th, the second Wednesday. So we'll follow up with the group here on some of the comments that were raised this evening and look to have it back on the agenda next month and into July. Bishop Tube, they've offered an extension on their final plan until, it's specifically noted as December 30th, not December 31st. I believe that may be a Friday, Saturday thing, I'll confirm that, but that is the date that they offered. We have not received a resubmission on that, that is currently with DEP resolving sort of the environmental aspects. We have not received any- of the environmental aspects. We have not received a new plan in quite some time. And the fourth one here is the Prospect Road Extension Projects for, to support a road extension to some existing lots at the end of that street. That's a preliminary plan. They've offered an extension through July 30th. We met with them just in the last few days to go through some of the comments in the previous letter, so we expect a resubmission soon. So, that's sort of a status update on the three of them, or the four of them, rather. Again, something tells me there's some comments, questions on at least the third one down here, so however you'd like to handle the motions, the public comment, et cetera, it's all the same, as long as we make motions as needed.
Well, I think, at this point, I'll, I'll open it up for... Gotta get comments first.
Everybody's gonna get a chance to talk, okay, but we're just gonna ask you to do it, like, in order, not shouting out, because we're not going to record anything that's shouted out, just so you know that.
We've got, we've gotta have you come to the mic, please.
Thank you. Deb Mobile, 42 Village Way, Malvern. I am at a loss for words, which might persuade you to do the right thing. To end this never-ending threat to the health and environment of the citizens of East Whiteland Township. So, I will ask you to just reflect on just a few things that have happened over the last 25 years. How we came to this. It began with a level of pollution, which qualified for federal designation, but was mistakenly turned over to the state DEP. And then there was the shady deal that allowed for an industrial property to have its zoning changed to residential. Over the years, there has been a lack of any effort whatsoever on the part of the DEP to get the site clean. There has also been repeated efforts from the builder to hamper justice, including slap suits, harassments, and pursuing legal, bogus legal avenues. And so, nothing has gotten done. It was about, it was over two years ago, when the DEP met with us to tell us they have a plan to make a plan. Still, we have no plan. We come here every few months to watch you vote on an extension for this development, which nobody here wants, except for maybe the greedy builder. And still, the cycle of doing nothing goes on, and nothing gets done. So, I guess I am asking you, here to ask you to do something. Do the right thing. Protect the residents and future residents of East Whiteland Township. Follow our state constitution, which legally protects our right to free clean air and water. And vote no. Thank you.
Kathleen?
Hi, Kathleen Stauffer, or Kate, 64 Fonstock Road. One of the things that I don't think Deb did mention is that the developer, actually from the DEP, got a covenant not to sue, and we actually sued the DEP to take that covenant out. So, they all knew how toxic this land was. I do wanna say, because I'll bring him up every time, that if Larry did not see that zoning sign at the end of Village Way, tiny little sign, because he was a very, very curious man, I called him nosy, but he was curious, if he did not see that sign, there'd be 200-some-odd townhouses on that land. He brought some of you guys through that land to show you what was involved here. So, he was always with us in this avocation for a clean and green Bishop Tube. I don't think I have anything else to say right now. Except, you do have a constitutional obligation. You have an obligation to us. And then someone in our neighborhood said, well, Constitutional Drive Partners and Brian O'Neill have a right to their land and what they do on their land. But our constitutional right to clean air, clean water, and a clean environment is for the better good of the whole community. His is the better good for just a few people. What we're asking for is to please protect our community. And another person that's here tonight is my daughter, Elizabeth, and is, we're suspicious, brain tumors are really, really hard. She's a survivor of three brain tumors. And there's a suspicion, and her doctors even said this, that yes, the TCEs that were airborne, they weren't in the water, they weren't in the ground, they were airborne that I breathed in when she was pregnant with me. It's very possible that that caused her brain tumors. When you start fooling around with that stuff, it's gonna be airborne. It's not only gonna be my community, it's gonna be Malvern, because the North Wind blows. It's gonna be down into different East Town, because Little Valley Creek goes down there. This is bigger than us, and so, Brian O'Neill's little want to have this land development is this big compared to what our community and the surrounding communities. And you have an obligation to uphold our constitutional right to clean air, clean water. It is, just in case you wanna know, Article 1, Section 27, in the PA Constitution. Thank you for all you do, really, and to all the police officers, because in our accident, so many people were involved in it, and all the EMS people, thank you as well. I think they left. But your job is so important, so we appreciate it. Thanks.
Carol Rapp, 89 Village Way. I'll probably start crying. I live about five, five houses from this site. I have lost three dogs to cancer. And I worry. I bought my house, single mom, newly divorced, found this great house that I could afford, and near a cul-de-sac, beautiful. Like, for me, it was perfect, not knowing there was a toxic site five houses down at the end of the cul-de-sac. So, my kids all played in that creek. They played all over the place. I mean, I didn't know anything about it until, thank god, Larry Stauffer spoke up and brought it to our attention, and it was like 2017, when I became aware of the significance of this contamination, this property, and what I had subjected my kids to. And it's, it's upsetting that here we are, I've been in my house almost 30 years, this business has been closed, I think, for over 30 years, and we sit with nothing happening. And I realize it's DEP is just sitting on their butts on this. But we have a developer who is insistent on putting residential housing on a toxic site. And yes, it was downsized from, good lord, 200 and something, which would have cleared out all that woods. And if you've ever, some of you have walked it, if you've ever been back there outside of the dilapidated building, it's actually nice. It's pretty, you know, it's unfortunately toxic. But it, and it's not only the fact, I just can't believe this builder still is insisting that we aren't fighting this all these years later. But then there's the worry, okay? Village Way ends in a cul-de-sac. You're, there, the plans are, we'll just have an emergency access. Well, bullshit, that'll open up in no time. And it's like, it will ruin the neighborhood. The whole point of this little neighborhood is, it's off, and we're all on our own, we all have beautiful yards, you know, and it's safe for the kids to ride their bikes. That was a requirement for me, for my kids to be able to ride their bikes. You start having construction traffic, and god knows what, going down Village Way, you can barely get a trash truck through when cars are parked on either side of the road. And I just wanna ask, say no. Just please say no, for, for me, for my family, for my neighbors, for the community, for the outreach of this community. Like, it, it extends beyond our little neighborhood. And I, it's just so emotional to me, because it's, I just can't believe we're still having to come here and fight this, month after month, year after year. I just don't understand it. So, I'm begging you, please say no to this developer who doesn't give a crap about us. He, he just wants the money, and then he's gonna put these innocent people on a toxic site. I, I just, please, just say no. Finally, say no.
Barb?
Hello. Barbara Arnold, 31 Fonstock Road. You guys are accustomed to just seeing one or two or a handful of us, so we bought a group with us tonight. These are all neighbors and people who live in the village, who are just as concerned about this as us, so I'm glad you can see that it's not just a handful of us that, that care about this. Thank you, thank you for coming tonight. Those of us who've been on the front lines all the time really appreciate it. So, I wanted to say that. Just, just a couple things to reiterate, some of you know, talking about this site. I wanna make sure all of you know this. The Bishop Tube Site contains TCE, it's tri-chloroethylene. It's a dangerous chemical linked to fetal heart defects, kidney cancer, leukemia, and other illnesses. According to a 2020 investigative report, the EPA found TCE damages the human body at a level 500 times greater than previously thought. Okay? There's also PFOS on this site, which you've probably heard of in the news with other things. So, if you wanna develop this land, you, the developer, you can't just push the dirt around and pour some concrete and call it a day and say it's remediated. It, it doesn't work that way. It could take, it literally could take decades to properly remediate this site. So, for the developer to say, it's easy, it's not easy. This should not happen. It should not happen this way. It's just, to me, it's unconscionable to try to develop this site, to, to put buildings on it and let people live there and not know what could happen. You can't just have a concrete basement and go, oh, no TCE's gonna come through. It, it is. It's in, like I said, it's in the land, it's in the air, it's in the water. It, it's everywhere on that site. And I personally feel like if, if I don't take this stand and try to prevent this, it's blood on my hands, it's blood on our hands. We can't let development happen there. So, I urge you to say no. But if you can't say no tonight, would you please explain to us why? We, we deserve an explanation, and we're gonna continue to ask you to say no, even if you don't do that tonight. Thank you.
Can we ask a question?
I wanna speak first. Jeff Jones, 97 Village Way. Oh, he's gonna give an answer. So, Jeff Jones, 97 Village Way. So, I live right next door, right next door, to this lovely brown site. I bought this place, I lived here about 18 years now. Great neighbor. They don't play loud music, there's no complaints, I got the train tracks in the back. So, over the course of 17 years, not 10 years, we've listened to Brian O'Neill come here, lie to us in order to convince the board and us to agree to allow him to go from commercial or industrial to residential, because, oh, I have my golden ticket. Let's go to my office, we'll hold hands and sing kumbaya. I don't know if anybody was here for that. A month later, we all got a notice from the DEP saying, huh, hold on, no, he doesn't. And that's what started this whole thing. So, over the course of 10-plus years, this township, these residents, the villagers, we've gone to meetings, we've listened to damn near anybody that has an environmental protection degree, DEP, you name it, they were all there. One time, we went to the school. And they have said that we do not have the money or the technology to clean that site up, because the TCE is now in the water. The hotspot is the building, like Mrs. Stauffer said, prevailing winds blow across the village. So, what do you think's gonna happen when they start digging that up and creating dust? The entire village is gonna be coated in TCE. And if you think there's nothing going on in that plant, three years ago, a little girl, seven houses up, not gonna say her name, died from cancer related to TCE on her 18th birthday. That site is a mess. I don't think constitutionally, they have to say no, but the oath that they took to be in East Whiteland Township and to run this township, I'm pretty sure your oath says that your, your job is to protect us, the residents, the people who pay taxes and live here, correct?
Yes.
To do no harm. So, please say no to this. This has been going on, because Brian O'Neill's not gonna spend $500 million to clean that site up. Going down a couple of feet, getting rid of the dirt and building houses, within three years, those people will get sick. The people in the village are gonna get sick because of all the dust, because once they start smashing that floor, because even the people who built that building said the reason the one concrete floor is a little extra thick is because that was where they dumped all the TCE, and they just sealed, capped it off with concrete. So, please say no, so you don't kill 200 or 300 people. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Sarah Casper. I worked for the federal EPA for 16 years. My background is science. I have provided you with all the information about PFOS and how dangerous it is. The people who have spoken now have mentioned everything that PFOS does, and you have not said no. Wherever you lift anything off the ground, you release it into the environment. That site is covered with PFOS, because that was what the operation used for 50 years. You can't get away from it. That is a fact. You know it, because I've told you. DEP knows it, because I told them. US EPA knows it, because they finally, in '23, said, it's a hazardous substance. When they finally did that, then we had a level that was safe, and that level that is safe in water is zero. Do you understand that? Zero. If four parts per trillion is found in your drinking water, it must be remediated. So, you need to know that, and you need to accept the fact that that site is so contaminated for 50 years of operation, using TCE, which is a degreaser, and using PFOS, which is commonly used in metal tubing. It's covered. Every time you remove a tree there, you're releasing particles of PFOS, so that it can travel into the air. And so, why do you think Kate's daughters had the tumors? That's why. It had nothing to do with her pregnancy. It had to do with what she was exposed to, what her kids are exposed to, and what all of you who live near there are exposed to on a daily basis. So, wake up, for god's sake, and say no, so that at least some of this is contained. The next thing you need to do is get on DEP and tell them to get the hell off their butts. Part of the problem is, though, comes from the organization I worked for, US EPA. They have not found a way to remediate PFOS. They know how to keep it out of your drinking water with filters. But what do you do with those filters? Because they're all contaminated with PFOS, and we don't know how to destroy it. So, the next one would be to get somebody who has the power to go after the federal. We are in a situation now today, which isn't conducive to doing that, but anybody that can do, because it's not... There is no other way to put it. And so it makes me really angry. I'm angry at the company, the government that I worked for. I'm angry at PAYDEP, because instead of coming here and saying, this is what the problem is, help me figure out what to do about it, they don't show. So they don't let people know exactly what they're up against. And that's not fair either, it's not fair to any of you here. So get angry. Get angry in a good way, so that you can do something about it, so that you can speak up and say, look, this is what's happening to us, and it's wrong, and you need to protect us. That's what your job is. It's why I'm here, because I never stopped doing my job at EPA, because I really liked doing it. Didn't like everything about EPA, but I did like doing that. So that's really all I have to say. Get angry, speak up, yell if you have to, stomp your feet, because this has been going on too long. It was 1999 when DEP took over the site, which gives you a clue how long it's been sitting. Trichlorethylene, which was found in, let's see, one, two, two drinking water wells, but it's probably much farther than that, but it's never been sampled for, to the extent. PFOS, we don't know how far that's gone, and it travels. It has, there used to be a show on TV, have gun will travel, well, have PFOS will travel. It just does not stay still, and that's the problem, because it keeps on going and going and going. So, that's it. Thank you.[726.63][726.63](APPLAUSE)
Hi. Cindy Shalcross, S-H-A-L-L-C-R-O-S-S, at 79 Village Way. About two months ago, a neighbor's elementary school child was discovered to have a brain tumor. This child has lived in their house for about seven years. The house is only a few houses away from Bishop Tube site. This child may need chemo and/or radiation. There was another child who grew up in our neighborhood who also lived a few houses away from Bishop Tube. She lived about five houses. The first child that I'm referring to lives three houses away from Bishop Tube. I live seven houses away from Bishop Tube. There was, like I said, there was another child who grew up in our neighborhood who also lived a few houses away. This child became ill with cancer and has since sadly passed away. These are the most recent cases, however, I will mention the child of our Green and Clean Bishop Tube Group founding leaders. Their child became, overcame the battle with the brain cancer at a very early age. So there is cancer affecting children in our neighborhood to this day. I'm not a scientist, nor do I know of any, know if any of their cancers are related to Bishop Tube. I am, though, here to implore you to say no to the development of Bishop Tube. Please remediate the contamination and leave this site alone. Failure to properly and completely remediate contamination at this site, combined with you not saying no to the new development, is a threat to our health, my children's health, our environment, safety in our neighborhood and beyond, and peace of mind. I am here asking you, as a member of a general worrying neighborhood, a resident of Village Way, only a few houses away from that stupid site, and a constituent of the East Whiteland Township, I am one of your people, and a man of two girls, one 17 and one 8, who have lived up the street from Bishop Tube at 79 Village Way all of their lives. Please, say no. I would like to have peace of mind that when my eight-year-old turns 17, that she doesn't have something going on in her brain. Or my 17-year-old, who has something when she gets older. I implore you, please say no. We have given you so many facts, every, I think I'm smart, I could be a scientist, considering what I know about that stupid site. I want you to say no, and stop giving him more time, or stop giving yourselves more time to figure out how to say no. Just say no. There's nothing more to say. That place is not habitable. Thank you.[947.69][947.69](APPLAUSE)
Hi there, good evening. My name is Annika Van Rossum, and I'm here on behalf of the Delaware Riverkeeper Network. So as you know from, I just want to say how lucky you are to have a community that cares so much, and doesn't just care about themselves, but are here thinking forward-looking, and forward generations of your township, and it is just so beautiful, and not every community has this, and how lucky you should all feel to have them. So as you know, from our May 1st letter, which I have copies, if anybody is looking to read that, if you haven't seen that yet, it's clear to us that you have no choice but to reject the final land development plan application, which you were set to do at the end of this month, but have yet again pushed back that deadline. And by continuing to just even entertain this project for another six to seven months, you are holding an ax over the head of your community while they sit on pins and needles waiting to see what is going to happen, to see the choice that you are going to make, and they have come to you pleading to make a choice, again, not about personal preference, but about protecting their health and their safety and the welfare of them here now and those yet to come for this community. The required remediation hasn't even occurred, and no remediation plan has even been designed. The PADEP timeline that you see on the Bishop Tube website is riddled with TBDs, and the investigation activities aren't even set to begin until the winter, which is still a vague timeline with no specific date. And that still leaves everybody in the dark. And again, this is not just about what PADEP is doing, we're here talking about what you have the power to do, which is to say no. And just so we're all very clear, you do have a constitutional duty under Article 1, Section 27 Pennsylvania's Green Amendment, to protect the water, to protect the air, to protect the environment and natural resources of your community here now and for future generations. And that duty does not just sit up in Harrisburg, it does not sit down the road at PADEP, it sits on this board here tonight, it will sit here every day after, no matter how far you attempt to kick this can down the road, it will sit here when you do decide to make a decision, and that decision based off that duty has to be no, because as people have told you, you cannot go forward with this. And this board needs to decide it, not a future board, this one. And just so we are clear, all the evidence to tell you that you need to say no is that based on the status of the remediation process, applicable state regulation, applicable municipal ordinance, the obligation for both procedural review and substantial protections provided for in Article 1, Section 27 of the Pennsylvania Constitution, the zoning hearing board determination, the township's preliminary plan approval, and the court of common pleas decision in Delaware Riverkeeper Network versus East Whiteland Township, that the East Whiteland Board of Supervisors is fully empowered under the law and obligated to the residents and natural resources of the town to reject the request for final land development approval at the Bishop Tube site. It is time to just say no. Thank you.[1133.33][1133.33](APPLAUSE)
Very concerned about this site because of its effects on health and because of the loss of an opportunity for this township to gain a lot by preserving the site as it is, rather than turning it into housing. So you, I've said before, I'm a neuropsychologist, my entire career has been in neurology and then in neuro-oncology, brain tumors. And children are particularly sensitive to contaminants, and the rates of illness in children have been rising, the rates of cancer are rising, rates of brain cancer are rising in Chester County. This is, contaminants seem to be invisible, but the impacts on our population are changing how childhood development is occurring. So back in the 80s, 10% of children under, who weren't adolescent, used to have chronic disease, and now 40% of them do. And much higher percents of all of our ages, all of our ages, are increasing in terms of carrying the burden of disease with us. And geneticists, metabolic specialists, and all kinds of developmental people are very aware that there is a connection with contaminants in the environment. So it looks, you know, I know township supervisors are concerned about liability, 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 but this looks like a short-term, they're making a decision for a short-term gain about liability and avoiding the long-term gain you could have by turning, you know, saying no, turning this down. The others have pointed out, you are not powerless, you are powerful, you have many laws to support your decision. Imagine how the community would support you if you started fighting back against a developer who wants to bring harm to the community. It is true that the development and the remediation is going to spread, certainly the building, the matter of fact, DEP's own presentations on the various possible ways to remediate the site cite that there is likely to be exposure of VOCs and trichlorethylene to the environment. So the short-term gain is just to avoid feeling liable, maybe you're think, I don't know what you think, but maybe you're realizing that you will be long gone from this township by the time that site finishes its remediation and a builder tries to build on it so that it's kind of not your liability. That's the short-term view. But the long-term view is the more powerful view. It is something that you would be giving, it would be your legacy to this township, to preserve what is a little microclimate over there, a little, almost like a little rainforest microclimate. We showed you all the extreme amount of biodiversity just in plant matter that exists in that place. It's a very beautiful little spot, and your township is gonna have to give variances to a builder to violate the protection of that EV stream. Okay? That, what is it, extraordinary value, what is it again?
Exceptional.
Thank you, exceptional value stream. You're gonna be in the place of doing another piece of harm, but you're gonna have to give him a variance because he wants to build right up against that stream. We looked at the map together. He's gonna build right up against that stream, he's gonna violate the law again, and you're gonna allow him to do that. So the township, how else is he gonna build? So once you've said, okay, we're gonna accept all of this, then you're gonna figure out how it's gonna happen, although you won't be here then, or you are here now, though, you are giving, making the decisions now. So I am concerned about the release of all that contamination downstream where I live, it's gonna come down there, too, it's gonna come, as someone said, it's gonna spread out. And it is troubling to think about the people who are going to move in there, because everyone's desperate to live in Chester County. So no matter what the history is of that site, people are gonna buy those properties, and they are going to have increased rates. So just want to say, please, you have the power, we want to support your power, we will support your power, we want you to say no to, let the builder know that you have the resources to do something better with that site than what he's planning to do. That we can't always give in to private property laws over all other health law, over all other health protections, as well as our legal protections, as everyone's been citing. You have the means to do it. Please do it. Thank you.[1495.63][1495.63](APPLAUSE)
Hi. Again, Andrew Kelly, 8 Longview Road. When I was listening to everything tonight, I think, Mr. Lambert, you had alluded to that the township pushed down two building projects because of road, roads weren't, like the traffic was gonna be too much for the particular roads. So we're here today, multiple times, to say that road issue is the same road issue that you were talking about, those other two developments, because they have access to Route 30 from this developed site proposal. And then we're also bringing about an environmental concern and a health concern to you guys as well. And please don't let your legacy be that hundreds of families are gonna move into a contaminated site, and seven, eight years, 10 years down the road, little kids are developing cancer, and it's your blood for this, you know, literally. So please take that into consideration for your decisions for this. The other thing is, I have to be frank, I mean, I've been to all these things, I went to Great Valley when we had too many people overflowing this room, and we were at Great Valley High School, and we filled that place, there were a couple hundred people in there. And I thought this was a done deal. And I know that a lot of our neighbors have been asking you tonight to say, why have you not voted no for this? So I would personally like to ask you folks now, while everybody's here, can you please tell us why this is still on board and why you have not said no to this builder?
Yeah, I can answer that. In the past, when a request of an extension has been requested, we have granted it. The alternative, I have said in the past, is to, there are two actions we can take for any application. We can approve an application with conditions, or we can deny it because of reasons, okay? When you deny an application, you have to be prepared and have specific reasons and a basis to deny. And in this case, let's say a denial happens by the end of the year, hypothetically. We have to assume, I believe it will be appealed to court, and then the decision is taken away from us, and it's before a judge. And if we are to take that action, we have to make sure to be prepared the night that we take the action, to make sure that all the grounds are clear and stated, so that when, not if, I think, a judge, one judge, Common Pleas, another judge, Commonwealth, reads the resolution of denial, it sticks, okay? That's been my reason.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
If we accept the extension to December 30, that grant, that extends the time within which we have to make a decision. We can, correct me if I'm wrong, make a decision before that. If we do, obviously, if we didn't want to get rejected in court quickly, we would have to give notice to the applicant that we intend to make that decision at a next meeting, okay? That is an option we have. That is an option I am seriously considering. Whenever an application's, we have, especially in this case, we have to be extra prepared, to be careful, thorough, and to make sure that any grounds for denial are part of the record. So that's why I have, in the past, granted, been preferred to grant an extension versus making a decision on an evening when we're not as prepared as we could be. The typical, our scenario is, when we plan to take a action on an application, we authorize the solicitor to prepare a resolution. That... The typical scenario is when we plan to take a action on an application, we authorize the solicitor to prepare a resolution. That authorization happens one month, a resolution is drafted and the action is taken formally, may or may not, the next month. So if or when action is taken on this application, it does take a few months, just so everybody is aware of that, in my mind, to make sure it's prepared. The risk, like I said, is that it will be appealed to court and then it's within the hands of judges who don't live here, who just follow case law. So that's the, to me, that's the ultimate risk.
Right.
May prevail, may not. So that's what I have.
Sounds like case law would hopefully be on our hands, according to the Riverkeeper folks, but, so, Mr. Lambert, did I hear you right that you guys denied two applicants for building because of road, not being able to adequate roads? Because I thought you said that in comment to somebody.
They weren't actual applications submitted to us, but in what they call pre-planning subcommittee, we raised concerns and that was one of the reasons that those applicants went away.
So those.
There wasn't, there wasn't seemingly enough support.
Right. So that rationale can't be used for our situation because we're past that particular point then? Just throwing it out there, because I'm trying to understand the process that you guys have to use.
Go ahead.
What they were proposing was, the one applicant was proposing a text amendment to the ordinance that was turned down. So they never, oh, am I not, so they never got to the point where they had an application for land development before the board. The other one, I don't know that it even made it that far. So they never got to the portion where they were filing an application for land development. This is an application for land development.
Well, thank you for clarifying. I mean, you folks seem like you really understand the situation and you understand where we're coming from with this stuff. And I hope that you are representing us as, you know, officials for our township. And I hope that it's your desire not to see this thing happen. I know you may not be able to speak out of school for that and I understand you have a lot of people and a lot of other people you have to answer to or whatever, but please do the right thing for our community and for us. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
If I could, I just want to clarify a little bit of what Rich is saying. What's before us is just granting an extension of time. We're not making any decision on a final plan. Nothing's being improved, we're just granting, I understand, it sounds like we're kicking it down the road, but we're it's understandable. I understand what you're saying, I understand what everyone's saying and we hear you loud and clear, but this is, the applicant is not in front of us, we're not giving him a no, or them a no, because they're not here to give them a no. We're just extending the time. When the time does come and they're in front of us and we have all the DEP facts in front of us, if you will, and we have a better legal standing to stand on to deny or confirm, whatever it may be, depending on the facts.
Where will you get that legal standing from?
We don't know what the DEP is going to do, just like you guys don't know. And we're all, all of us in this room are waiting for that and that's, that's the ongoing discussion that we have no answer for. And this, this is not a decision in either way towards that, this is just an extension of time, just like Lou's here asking for an extension of time for his client. We're not making a decision for or against him, he just needs a little more time to, when we could come to that decision. Is that a little more clear?
Yes.
Thank you, Bernadette.
I think one of the things also is, is in part of the preliminary approval, I'm just looking at it now, Bishop Tube has to obtain DEP approval for, as Peter.
They can't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's talking.
I wear hearing aids and sometimes I think I'm really loud. In the preliminary plan approval, it indicates that Bishop Tube has to obtain DEP approval. They're working through that process. As Peter had said, we don't know what DEP is going to do or say. We, I do understand that the, they are in federal court with DEP and Bishop Tube and they're working through whatever needs to be done, but we're not party to that and we haven't been updated yet recently from DEP, which is why, again, they're asking for the extension because we're all, we all need to know what DEP is going to do.
So it's not DEP's decision though, whether you approve it, it's not their decision?
It's part, it's part of the information this board needs to have to see. It's part of, it's part of it.
To see from them, who's going to pay for the remediation, what exactly remediation would be?
Right. To see exactly what's being proposed.
It's part of the preliminary plan, like, I'm just reading, "In addition to securing DEP's approval for the unsaturated soils in the three soil hotspots, the applicant shall obtain written confirmation from DEP that soil hotspot remediation was completed in accordance with DEP approved remediation scope of work as may be amended." I'm just reading one of the conditions of the preliminary plan approval.
Sorry, I didn't want to just keep popping up from a chair. So you're saying that the remediation plan that DEP eventually develops is going to inform you as to whether you want to approve the housing development there, right? Because there are different levels.
Well, it's already been approved. This is the preliminary, there's the preliminary plan approval and the final, the preliminary approved it.
Yes.
Yeah.
We know that you did, we were all there.
So these are the conditions of preliminary plan, I just happened to read that one. So the board can't grant final plan approval is what I'm, my recommendation to that would not be to grant final plan approval until these conditions are met, which includes input from DEP.
And those conditions will be met, what, in 20 years?
Well, that's up to DEP, we don't control DEP.
No, but we know that remediation takes a long time. They're still legally fighting out who's going to pay for it. I mean, all of that's going to take, you know, more than a decade. So that's what you're waiting for? I don't, I'm just trying to really understand.
The preliminary plan was approved.
No, I know that.
Right, I'm just reading from the conditions.
No, I'm trying to understand what information DEP will have for you in the future that's going to influence your decision about the final approval, which, of a plan that has changed, changes all the time, more roads, you know, it is going to impact the stream, I mean, you'll, you'll, your chance. So I'm trying to understand what information from the specific, right, DEP hasn't made its final remediation plan yet.
Right, we don't know, right, they haven't, they haven't told us anything.
So what information from that plan, when you get it, is going to influence you?
I'm not sure what you mean. We have to abide by the conditions set forth in the preliminary plan approval, one of which is, you know, that Bishop Tube obtaining DEP's approval for certain things and remediation steps and things of that nature, which is in the control of DEP.
I just don't understand how it arms you, how it arms you to make the decision.
If I may, let me introduce two hypotheticals.
She's asking the correct question, you're not getting the right.
I'm going to try to answer, I'm going to try to answer that right now, if I may. Two hypotheticals might be. Let's, let's say we live in a fantasy world where they come up with a solution, the impossible unicorn over the rainbow solution of cleaning up this site completely zero.
For human habitation, that's.
For human habitation. That is pie in the sky. That's fantasy currently, correct? Yes, correct.
Okay.
If that were to happen, we would have to grant, grant them approval.
Right.
That, that being said, most likely what's going to happen is that, that is, that can's going to keep getting kicked down the road and we're never really going to be, I shouldn't say never, we most likely aren't going to be presented with that scenario because that, that target is so
Difficult to reach.
Difficult to achieve.
It's difficult to achieve.
Because, and that target has to be met for us to
Without extraordinary releases, yeah.
Grant approval. What we're looking at here tonight, what everyone's here for tonight is just that can being kicked down the road while the DEP keeps looking on that. They have to keep applying for that.
I hear you, I hear you, it's just that it is going to take decades for you to get that information.
That, and that may be.
Because they're not going to know, the DEP isn't going to know what's achievable until they've done it.
Agreed, agreed. And that may be the can that keeps getting kicked down the road by this. But, but if I may, also introduce another hypothetical, and Lou, if you could entertain me for this briefly, I know I'm putting you on the spot, Lou. If, just random example, if we were to deny an extension, or actually ask for an extension from you, if we were to deny an extension from you with no basis, what would you do tomorrow?
We'd appeal the denial.
You'd appeal denial and you'd be in your full, not in this application, a separate application, just a regular land development application.
It would be appealed.
It'd be appealed and then, as Rich said, we'd be in court and that would be a real X-factor of what will happen in the future for the township and that site. And we, we do not want to enter that avenue.
Well, as we're being advised by lawyers, they're saying that you will, you do have reasons to, to disapprove the final.
I can't speak to your legal counsel, I can only speak to the legal counsel in the room that we have. That's what, that's what we're dealing with right here.
With the ultimate question being, are you worth, are you prepared to take that risk, to take it out of our hands and to judges who don't live here, who know nothing about, I know East White Land exists, but they look at a case and it's a piece of paper in front of them. So that's, that's the choice and we'll explore that. We will explore with our solicitor our grounds to deny and make a best informed decision.
That's great. That's terrific. But DEP has stated clearly that until the site is remediated, O'Neill is not to step foot on that land. And basically, nobody should because each step that is taken on that land releases more of the bad stuff. So you do have some very good reason to say no, not until the site's remediated. It's very simple. And DEP has told you that, so you know it. And you can use that and you can use that with clear conscience and you don't have to worry about anybody, anybody's solicitor coming and saying, well, but, 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 but that's what was said from the very beginning too, in truth. And so that it hasn't been remediated yet, ah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of fingers you could point at different people, but for the moment, that's the important thing. It's not remediated, so therefore it's not a safe place for anybody to go. And that's what you need to know and what you really need to understand and that's what gives you the authority for now to say no. You can't really do anything else, in truth. You know? If you let O'Neill go on or anybody else, then you're endangering the whole populace and you can't do, I know you don't want to do that, that's not who you are. So use what you do have as authority and stand up and say, this is what DEP said, therefore we're saying no for now, until the site's remediated. That's easy, you can do it. I know you can. You're good people, there's no reason for you not to. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Elizabeth Stoffer, 64, Fonstock Road. I just want to reiterate that we know that the continuance, what's going on in this meeting, but your constituents are saying we don't want it. You guys work for us, I think. Just, just keep that in mind. I mean, they've explained so many times again, after so many years, you know, that the environment, the population, the, the layout of the land with the oil tanks and the village right there and then two train tracks and then that extension into the village for emergency access, the traffic, all the development that's happening already, there's just so many reasons. I don't know the legal jargon again or what needs to happen, but I think that your constituents saying no should be enough for a township. Thank you.
Stephen Schmidt, 60, Fonstock. I don't know, am I clean up tonight or is there somebody else? So I had two pages of notes, but everything I wanted to say, almost everything I wanted to say has already been cited. I just want to highlight a couple of things. Our colleague Jeff Schmidt, no relation, with the Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission, positive, well, maybe way back, sent in a 12-page memo to the Board of Supervisors in January of 2022, which commented on the DEP plan of proposed cleanup. So please refer back to that as you build your body of information to, to counter this. Two points he made, which are significant, the plan is designed as a detention basin and infiltration pond at the north end of the site, near the railroad track, embankment. He's an expert. He cites that if you infiltrate the water into the soil and into the bedrock, it will have the tendency to flush out the chemical, chemicals, which will then leach into Little Valley Creek. That's an Exceptional Valley stream. So just be aware that that engineering is not very smart. And then the second thing he makes the point about has to do with the vapor barriers that are proposed underneath the slabs. That's not a forever solution, nor is the ventilation systems. So ask yourselves the question, when Mrs. Jones' system goes out, what happens? The only comments I wanted to make, which were touched on also by you, Rich, there's a tension here, obviously, between the developers' rights embodied in the municipal palady's planning code and the residents' rights enshrined in the Pennsylvania Constitution. That's the conflict that we're dealing with. And while everybody says, and you, I think you do have the right to say no, my suggestion is, in this continuation window, can you take the step with township solicitor to actually do some case law research and prepare for the eventual next step? That's my point. Thank you.
That's what I was, that's what I was exactly suggesting.
Good evening, Jeanette Hoven, 61, Fonstock Road. I don't usually like to come up here at all, I like to just sit back and listen, but I've been here my entire life. I grew up in the house I'm living in, on Fonstock Road, straight across from Bishop Tube. And although there are some cases of cancers and stuff that are still going on, it's not like it was when I was younger, when it was a full-blown plan and it was busy hustle and bustle up there. I can't even tell you how many people, neighbors, friends, that all have died from cancers. And a lot of people's lives have been affected by Bishop Tube. And somebody else said, I was trying to think on the way over here, what word would I use? And somebody else said it unconscionable, that this is even a thought to build and to put people's lives, not just ours in the village, but new people that are going to buy that aren't going to have a clue. Because most people don't do that kind of research when they buy a piece of property in a new development. They assume that all is fine, the government said it was good. But I cannot believe that the land and how it's going to be disturbed, how that's going to be safe in any way, shape or form for anybody. And even for us, who, now that it's calmed down for the last 30 years, because nobody's been up there, you just, you just can't let 30 years, because nobody's been up there, um, you, you just, you just can't let it happen, seriously. I mean, I, I don't know how much longer I have, but if that starts getting stirred up, I'm sure we're all going to be going, and you won't have to worry about it, but please, just say no. Thank you.
Okay. So at this time, um, we'll take the matter in hand for the extension, which is before us. And we will, we can call all four together, Rich? For extensions?
Yeah, maybe do one by one now, um, because I'll have a comment on one of them. Guess which one. I'll make a motion to approve the extension for LD 06 2024 for the Si Temple Worship Center till June 30, 2025.
All right, one vote on it.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye. Next is the, we may have already done this, but approve the, uh, motion to approve the extension for LD 11 2024 for GVCC redevelopment plan for the R and D facility till July 13th, 2025.
All in favor? Aye.
Motion to approve the extension for LD 13 2024 for the Prospect Avenue Road extension till July 30, 2025.
All in favor? Aye.
Approve the extension for Bishop Tube redevelopment until December 30, 2025. However, I am requesting that the solicitor take over the next month, review the file, and consider the pros and cons, uh, to advise the board on, uh, the, uh, grounds for denial as requested, uh, and/or potential opposing positions of the applicant, so we can consider and make an informed, um, conclusion and decision.
I, I will, I will just add, just one other thing into that, is that there is, there's a preliminary, there's 12 preliminary conditions out there that exist already, okay? And I think that has to come into play with, with, with Bernadette looking into this. There are 12 conditions that we put in there that have to be met. So in addition to the other research, please keep in mind that those exist. I second the motion.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I apologize, Zach. I just wanted to check. I thought, uh, Lou Colagreco had indicated we would have till July 9th. Was he per?
He said he would extend through Jul- July. I said that the next board meeting is on July 9th, and I looked over at Lou and he nodded when somebody read July 13th, so I'm assuming that his email will say July 13th.
Got it.
He's hiding behind the.
So, Mr. Colagreco, you will give us a letter that says July 13th.
I would give you a letter.
Thank you.
Sunday, July 13th.
That, I'm good.
All right. Zoning and code enforcement.
No, we have to do this resolution for Lou.
Uh, we've got one more here.
Yeah, I don't think Lou waited, um, all this time to, to get that one skipped.
I don't know.
This is a resolution that would release some of the financial security related to the sanitary and sewer improvements for the Gray Star Development Project. This project, as you know, with the pending sewer sale, um, there's been a little bit of, um, confusion over who would own, who would operate, who should permit, who should plan for the improvements. So what we've worked through the, the applicant with and with Aqua is to release some of the close, the money for the close-in improvements and to have, or to retain some of that money and release the remaining money, because they would be posting the equivalent financial security with Aqua to cover those improvements, should there be anything that goes wrong. So essentially, we're just allowing, uh, Aqua to assume our role in that process going forward. It's really just a paperwork exercise here, but wanting to be clear on the rationale.
And we did confer with Aqua about this, and Aqua was in agreement with this, um, and so we're releasing that portion related to the force main. Aqua's going to take over that. Lou's client's going to sign those agreements with Aqua, put up the financial security with Aqua. We did a short amendment to the land development agreement, which indicates that if the, something should occur, that it comes back to us quickly, uh, or, uh, anything like that, that, uh, we will tell Lou's client that they have to put the financial security up, back up with us. I don't think it will happen that fast.
Okay. So, Peter, do you want to, um, make a motion to release? D, I, 5 DI.
I, I do have it.
Yeah, I think you could actually just, um, understand the question. Since it's outlined in the resolution, I think you could reference the resolution number, but I'll defer to Bernadette.
Very good, then. I'd like to make a motion to release the financial security from Resolution 21 dash 2025, authorizing the partial release of financial security for sanitary sewer improvements for Gray Star Apartment Project financial security posted to Aqua, and amended land development agreement will be executed with the township. That's the number I remembered.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Back the truck up.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, gotcha.
Moving on to zoning and code, I have no activity with the zoning hearing board for our campaign.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Uh, our next meeting then will be in, uh, June 23rd, uh, will be the next hearing, it's scheduled, um, and that'll be for a long-continued, uh, application for the conversion of Sinesta Suites. Under Updates, as residences, as residents do spring projects, please be reminded that you can check with code departments to see if any ideas you have for your property require a permit. An example would be fences. They do require zoning permits, which has a $50 nominal application fee, and you are asked as part of that application to file an application and show a plot plan showing the location and the style of the fence proposed. Most permit applications can be copied from our township website, available online, and as always, if you have any questions, uh, you can always contact us by phone or email, and we'll get you the appropriate information that you need for any project that you have for your home.
Carol, you got a question?
There we go. If you replace your fence, but it goes in the exact same spot, do you need a permit?
Yeah, she would still need a zoning.
Okay, because I'm thinking of repla- that's why I was wondering, I just wanted to check. Thank you.
Are there any public comments for items that we've not previously discussed? I don't know if we let somebody from out of town in. Go ahead, Nick.
Can you repeat what your motion was for the extension for the Bishop Tube, just so I report it back accurately?
It was a motion to accept the request for an extension of the time by which the Board of Supervisors have to act on the land, the final land development plan until December 30, 2025. And that was the motion for the extension. At the same time, I asked the solicitor to review the case, consider pros and cons of, uh, denial of the application, consider reasons for a denial, consider reasons against a denial, and advise the board of her legal conclusions.
Okay. So as a comment or question, are we all just ignoring the fact that no matter what your decision is, if it's a denial today or 20 years from now, that it's going to be appealed? So not doing it now because it's going to get appealed, I think is a, I think that's just a cop, I mean, again, I'm speaking as Nikki Whitlock, the concerned citizen of Chester County, that that's a cop-out, that it's going to get appealed no matter when you make a decision to deny it, if you choose to deny it.
Well, currently, well, currently, we don't have good legal standing to deny.
You, you can deny the extension. Then what is the, what is the consequence if you deny the extension?
If we would have denied the extension tonight, we would have had to make a decision tonight.
Right.
Right.
Exactly, which I think is what I've heard at multiple meetings here about, so.
And like I said.
It's just, I can't believe we keep coming back to the same full circle.
It is, but when you make a decision on a denial of any plan, you be prepared.
That's what I'm saying, that if it's today or five years from now, it's going to be appealed no matter what, unless you approve it, which is, would be just mind-boggling to me, but, um, yes. So I guess it's good that in the next month that the solicitor gets those billable hours in order to make those recommendations, I guess we'll use that word.
Yeah, we didn't do, I didn't do it to just give her billable hours.
But that's what she's going to get out of it, that's the reality. But also, is it going to be a response that you can handle? Right?
Whatever the response is.
I mean, once the recommendation comes from your solicitor, it's putting you in a situation where you're going to have.
Lawyers advise, boards decide.
Oh, thank you for that explanation, okay. Good evening, thank you.
Once, once, once we make a decision, there's going to be a winner and a loser. We, we don't want to be the loser.
Okay.
Consent agenda, I'll read in its entirety. Any questions, pause me, and we can hit them. Approve the meeting minutes from April 15, 2025. Ratify the payment of bills in the amount of $1,102,610.60. Accept the treasurer's report. Approve, approval of the EM cult's invoice for $87,928 to outfit the new dump truck.
And that's just to add to the truck, that's not the truck.
What did we pay for the truck? Um, approve the Bowman proposal for Phoenixville Pike Sidley Road inspection and construction oversight in the amount not to exceed $117,805. Approve payment for summer night movie services, including production and licensing costs in the amount of $2,375. Approval of the final payment for the Route 401 Traffic Signal Project to Armor and Sun in the amount of $29,139. Approve the People's Light contribution for their 50th year in the amount of $2,500. Any questions? Singh, nine, can you take a motion, or?
I'd like to.
Peter?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent, the, excuse me, May 13th, 2025, consent agenda as read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.